Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. You are joining the March 1st Louisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann, and because of COVID-19, our meetings being held electronically and is being recorded. To request permission to speak during public comment periods, an attendee must raise their hand by clicking on the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Attendees calling in can dial *9 on their phone and a raised hand will appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and the clerk unmutes you, you'll need to tell us your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you wish to speak on another topic, you'll need to raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and helping us to maintain meeting decorum. City Clerk, please have a roll call.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Portman Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Member Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Most?
And I see Councilmember Most, perhaps my connection is bad, but she's here as well.
I said here, can you hear me?
Now I can, and it might be enhanced. Perfect. Thank you so much. And so could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. And so just a quick poll of the council. We have heard from many, many members of the public that they hope to have some certainty and conclusion on many points from tonight. And we have a very full agenda. So if it please the council, we could change our rules to have public comment last two minutes this evening. So we can make sure that we can hear from everybody, but also get to a point where we can make decisions. Is that acceptable to the council? Councilmember Lay?
Mayor, I understand the, the, you do that, and it's not an issue that I'm going to fall my sword on. Cause I know we want to try to hear as many people as we can, and that might allow us to hear more people. I wonder if we could, well, I don't know. I guess I would prefer the three, three minutes, but I'll, I'll go with what folks want to do. I certainly would encourage, as I did a few days ago, people to double up on time to try to make use of, of the other rule that we have. Is that, is this something, Mayor, that gets, that you take public comment on or not really?
So I'm just asking the council if they would be okay with going in this direction. We can make it, we could, we could delay the whole meeting and have a whole separate meeting posted. So we could talk about whether or not to do this in the rules, but I don't, I would not be in favor of going that route.
All right, here, I hear what you're saying.
All right. So if I could just get a thumbs up from folks if they're all right with going with two minutes this evening. We have, thank you, everyone. So on our public comment periods tonight, we will be enforcing a two-minute time limit. Thank you. And so when people are pooling time, there will be a four-minute time limit for pool time. And so that takes us to our first public comment period this evening. So we have public comment on items that are not on our agenda tonight. So if there isn't them on our agenda, you'll save your comments for that time when we're talking about that topic. If you'd like to comment on items that are not on our agenda or items that only appear on our consent agenda, please raise your hand and let us know what you'd like to tell us. First, we have Christian Dino.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name's Christian Dino, 967 Eldorado Lane.
This section is for public comments on items that are not on our agenda or items that are on our consent agenda. Next, we have Chris Fuller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I wanted to, I think you've probably, it's in the winds right now, the discussions about reducing permit fees for those of us who lost our homes and looking at options, whether it's through use tax, whether it's just reducing, you know, the actual permit review fees. I'm sure you've heard Boulder County, or excuse me, Superior just voted last night to enact that. I know we're a different community, and I know we have different tax rates, but I just wanted to just sort of officially ask that you put it on the docket to investigate, discuss what options there are to reduce the permit fees for those of us having to, you know, rebuild our homes.
Thank you. Next, we have Richard Morgan.
Richard? Can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This is Richard Morgan, 644 West Pine Street. I'd just like to begin by thanking Pastor Bill Stevens and the Ascend Church for hosting the Construction and Rebuilding Fair that took place this weekend in their facility. Many, many people attended that event, no doubt. Many more received valuable information on how they can rebuild and return to our community. I think Ascend Church is a wonderful asset for Louisville. You know, on that note, I'd also like to thank the past and present city council leaders like Mayor Chuck Sisk that took time out of their day to participate this weekend with the hundreds of our residents who are meeting downtown to vocalize their concerns and their desires on how they can rebuild and return to our community as well. I know council is working hard on many of these elements. This is a very monumental task, and we're grateful for the time that you're putting into it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have J.C. Spire.
Hello?
Hi there.
Hi. I would not normally address someone personally in this type of forum, but Mayor Stolzmann, I recently listened to an interview with you on Colorado Public Radio. And in that interview, you indicated that the request by Marshall Fire victims to suspend, modify, or amend the 2021 code was akin to asking to rebuild with lead pipes. That statement was promptly redacted, but we heard it. And that remark was offensive and disrespectful to the community that you represent. Could you please take this time to apologize for that comment? I guess the answer is no.
So you have another minute, and you're welcome to say anything you like.
Right. My, by imposing this tax on less than 6% of the population of Louisville, you're making political a building ordinance, ordinance, excuse me, that will have no effect on safety or climate change in the city, state, country, or the world. I'd like to see by a show of hands, how many of the city council members will be upgrading their homes to meet this stringent standard? Mayor Stolzmann, will you be incurring the amount of money that's required to upgrade your home? Mr. Maloney, Councilmember Maloney, how about you? I know Deb is intending to do that because she indicated she would be. Okay, no response. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I'm sorry, Ms. Stolzmann, that you wouldn't address my concern.
Thank you for your comment. I just want to clarify for everyone, this is the public's time to tell us anything they'd like to, and it's not a time for council to respond to comments, but we do appreciate everybody's comments very much. And I'm happy to respond to folks after the fact. This is just the time for the community to tell us anything they'd like to tell us that's not an item on the agenda tonight. Next, we have Tanya.
I think that's me. Sorry. Um, sorry, I wanted to comment on the code, but I'm not supposed to comment on the code right at the moment, right at this moment. I guess if the floor is open, I would say that I absolutely, you know, I hope the city council, if you feel this way, you should communicate that your first priority is rebuild Louisville and to get everybody back in their homes and to take into account all the underinsured people. Also, I have to say that I've spoken to fire survivors in many other towns, and a lot of them have rescinded their codes for energy upgrades. And if we have the opportunity here to get the money, if we have the opportunity, if we have the opportunity to get the money to have these upgrades in our homes, we're going to end up with better homes and more money to rebuild our homes. This money is not going to be available to apply to other, other areas of your house. Like, it only comes if you do the energy upgrades, and it makes your house worth more money. So if Louisville actually succeeds in getting enough grants and incentives for people to cover any shortfall they have in their O and L insurance to do this, we're doing something that I don't know of any other town that has done. And that is a great outcome. So I hope that the city will continue to balance the need people have, the needs people have to get back into their homes with limited budgets and limit, in a limit, you know, in a reasonable time to have some certainty to plan and, and achieve building back a more valuable house. So, um, so I hope everyone will also give the city that a little bit more time to figure out what the shortfalls are and where the money is, because that's a great outcome for all of us. So thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Rex and Barbara Heckman.
Thank you very much. Mayor Stolzmann, I wanted to show great appreciation to Councilmembers Lay and Dickinson for coming to our rally. They showed great courage. They spoke eloquently, and it really impressed all of us. I also want you to know that Councilmember Lay recommended to all of us that we pool our time rather than have everyone speak so that you guys could vote. I just wanted to know from you, you may not have known this before you steamrolled the rest of your council, but maybe you should have listened to him, because we could have 39 homes on our street alone speak for two minutes, or you could allow the one person who was going to speak three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Josh Cooperman.
Hello?
Hi.
This is Josh Cooperman. I live at 216 Griffith Street. I would like to make a comment on Consent Agenda Item G regarding the city's annual fuel purchase. I'd like to begin by reminding city council of certain internal objectives stated in our Sustainability Action Plan. Two of them in particular. The first one regarding climate. It says that we want to reduce core municipal greenhouse gas emissions annually below the 2016 baseline through 2025. The second one is regarding transportation. It says that we want to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions from the city fleet. The historical data presented in this agenda item do not reflect progress on these objectives. In fact, our diesel fuel use may actually increase slightly over the past few years. I hope that city council and the city's departments will make strides to reduce the city's fuel usage. I will make a couple of minor suggestions at the moment. The first one could be implemented immediately. Simply stop mowing all non-recreational turf. My second suggestion is that we should speed up electrical vehicle and electric equipment adoption so that we can instead use the 100% renewable energy on which our city's municipal buildings currently run. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Kendra Stockerbrand.
Good evening. My name is Kendra Stockerbrand. Our house was at 824 Trail Ridge Drive. We did completely lose our home in the fire. I want to address your item on the Marshall Fire Legislative Agenda Addendum. You have a bullet item that says assist low and moderate income residents who are uninsured and underinsured with the cost of rebuilding. I have to be very transparent to tell you that my husband and I were very significantly impacted by COVID. So even though we are not low or moderate income this year, keeping my fingers crossed, we had two very difficult years where we were. Your assumptions in that statement are that only the low and the moderate income residents are severely impacted by the Marshall Fire. I can tell you that we had to, we had to re-mortgage our home. We have a debt that we were forecasted to pay off in '27. Now it's at 2040. At the current cost of building, we will have a second mortgage. The questions you need to be asking rather than making assumptions are things like, how long has the homeowner owned the home? And how will that impact their disaster tax compensation? Cause the longer you own a home, it's less positive for you. And ask question, will the homeowner be able to afford to live in their rebuilt home with the additional mortgage required to rebuild? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Obricht.
Hi, yeah, I live at 965 Arapahoe Circle. We also lost our home. And I guess this question is more broad about when are we going to have in-person meetings now that the mask mandates are lifted? I really feel like the city council, I do want to second what someone had said earlier. I think Chris and Caleb for coming to the rally. I would really love to see the rest of you face us face-to-face and not behind a Zoom camera. So I'm just curious, when are we going to be able to sit face-to-face and have these conversations not over a computer? Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, that takes us to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Keep any discussion of the consent agenda this evening? Seeing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The consent agenda is approved. That takes us to council informational comments on pertinent items that are not on our agenda. Any council informational comments this evening? Seeing then, that takes us to our city manager's report. City Manager Durbin?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have two items for you tonight. One, just would like to remind people that on our website, on our election page, displaced voters can update voter registration so that they can still vote as Louisville residents, even if not currently still living in town. So just want to share that with folks. And then also, I have some disappointing and bad news. The press release just went out just before the meeting started. The PPDR program, the Private Property Debris Removal Program, there was a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night to talk about the details of this, and we were hopeful that the contractor would be on the ground as early as next week, starting this work. This has been a very important priority for us. We've been pushing really hard to move this process along. And just this afternoon, a lawsuit was filed in regards to the contracting for this program. So I can't even tell you how disappointed I am to, first of all, hear that, and then, second of all, have to share this news. So this is going to set us back. Not sure yet how long. Hopefully, it's not very long. In the press release, we do note that we still remain hopeful that we can get the work completed in July. But we'll have to see how this lawsuit plays out. I don't know any more details about the lawsuit. It just came this afternoon, but this is real-time information I wanted to share with you and the folks who are impacted, property owners who are on this call. People who registered for the webinar tomorrow night on the PPDR program will be notified when that is rescheduled. So you don't have to worry about re-registering or anything like that. That'll, that'll happen automatically with the county folks. So again, I'm extremely disappointed, but wanted to share that information. And I assure you that we will continue to push as hard as we can at a staff level to move this important project forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. That takes us to our regular business. First, we'll have an update from our Insurance Commissioner, Michael Conway, this evening. Commissioner Conway, thank you very much for joining us to answer community questions around insurance and to provide an update for us. Take it away. You'd like to tell us anything.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Usually, this is the point where I say, I'm happy to be here, but I think we all know that you wish that I wasn't here. And I'm sorry that I am here to talk about this difficult subject, but wanted to give you all an update on three different things. The mayor asked me to give you an update, rather, I should say, on three different things. One, a data request that we have to out to our insurance companies for all of the claims related to the Marshall Fire. Two, just give a kind of, she wanted me to come and just answer some questions, give you a basic 101 on law and ordinance coverage and answer any questions that you all have. And then three, talk about just in general, the types of complaints that we, that we're seeing, that I think you all are seeing too. So can I share my screen? I've got a short slide deck.
Please do.
Okay, great. So I've only got about six slides, and I'm going to go through six or seven slides on the data call. And then talk through those other two topics relatively quickly, and then we'll, then I'm just going to hang out and answer questions that folks have. So let's get right into it. Let me see if I can, the problem with doing everything on a laptop is it covers up some of the screen that you need to see. So this is the basic kind of, the basic information of what we're trying to do with the data call. So we asked for a whole host of information, but part of the, part of the, the reason we asked for the information, really the main reason we asked for the information, was to start to look and see how big of a problem that we have on the underinsurance component of things. So we asked for policy limits for each claim that we got, but in particular for total losses and square footage for those, for those claims as well. The second slide there, it's obviously going to, the main point, like I said, is to allow us to calculate what the, what the insurance coverage limits are going to be and what the underinsurance problems are going to be for folks so that we can start to find solutions, at least do our best to find solutions. Then we also requested the kind of those riders, the law and ordinance coverage, extended replacement costs, and then guaranteed full replacement cost. What types of riders are out there on all of the different claims that we've got of the roughly 1,100 homes that were lost? We also asked for the software program that companies used in order to estimate and provide information to consumers about what the replacement cost would be if they lost their home. We focused on coverage A and B values. That's the conversation on the underinsurance component in general. I think there's going to be, there's, there's a growing concern that we have within the Division of Insurance that I was talking about with the insurance companies today. There's the software program that was used in order to estimate the replacement cost coverage in order to find a policy for coverage A and B values. But there's a different program that companies are using, not universally, but in general. Companies typically have a separate program that they're using for estimates. And what we're seeing is that those estimates that folks are seeing, that are getting from their insurance companies for their rebuild costs do not come anyplace close to what their original coverage limits were. So we're going to have some questions about that, and we're going to work with our companies to understand why that's the case and see if there's a potential solution on that front, at least going forward. So we're going to compare the inception date. So the inception date is when a policy is purchased, essentially. It's the, it's the term of art in the insurance world that the inception date is effectively when the, when the policy was purchased. So we're asking for this information on the inception date. When was the, was the property owner occupied? The city name and the zip code, obviously, for our purposes, the city name for this particular fire is going to be most important. That original policy inception date, the dollar, the dollar amount of coverage A and B. And just as a quick reminder for folks, coverage A is your dwelling, the main home. Coverage B is anything that you have, any other structures that you had on your property. So like a freestanding garage, a shack, or something along those lines would be covered under coverage B. And then the total square footage of the home. So really, what the, the core idea here is it'll give us enough information to paint a picture of, of what the policy limits were, obviously, but what the amount was that people had per square foot in order to rebuild their home. And that'll give us that, that picture of what the underinsurance problems are. So then we ask for similar information on the date of loss. So we asked for the dollar amount of coverage A and B at date of loss, the total square footage at the date of loss too. Obviously, we know that people change their homes as they live in them in all sorts of different ways. So the, the total square footage will change, and the longer people are in their homes, that dollar amount of coverage for A and B at the date of loss will have changed as well. So contents, coverage, and endorsements, this is some of the other information that we're asking for that we asked for the contents coverage, for coverage C, that's shown on the deck page at the time of loss, the percentage of law and ordinance benefit. So that's going to be a piece that we'll talk through a little bit more in a few minutes here. But the percentage of law and ordinance benefit will become important for a whole host of different conversations. Obviously, it's important for you all tonight as you're talking through the building code components. But in-state law, insurance companies are required to offer law and ordinance coverage at 10% at renewal and at purchase of a homeowner's policy. So we want to see what folks were buying, if they were buying anything. If we've got companies that we just don't, that none of their homeowners had law and ordinance coverage, we're going to have some questions about whether they were actually following that, that requirement to offer it. Extended replacement cost benefit is similar. It's required to be offered at renewal and at purchase. And it's, it's a little bit different in the sense that this is coverage above and beyond whatever the policy limit was on, is on the deck page. So if you had $400,000 of, if your policy limit was $400,000 on your declarations page for coverage A, your extended replacement cost benefit typically is in the 20% range. So that would be an additional $80,000 that you have just to rebuild your home. It doesn't have to be tied to law and ordinance coverage like the law and ordinance benefit would. And then the last piece, we know that there are some folks out there that had guaranteed full replacement cost benefits in their policies, or they had a rider on their policy for guaranteed full replacement cost benefit. So those folks should not have an underinsurance problem at all. The whole purpose of guaranteed full replacement cost is that it will guarantee that you're going to be able to rebuild your home. So if anybody out there is being told from, by their insurance company, if you had this coverage and your insurance company is telling you that you're going to have a short call of some kind, please reach out to us ASAP at the Division of Insurance. And I've got our contact information here at the end of just a couple of slides, because we definitely want to jump into that issue straight away. So longer term, so this is going to be, this is a survey that will, that the companies will continue to respond to. So they're going to continue to respond with what they're actually paying to. And that'll give us a picture of both what the underinsurance issues are, but longer term, especially for the partial losses of the folks out there that are suffering from smokes and ash, how insurance companies are paying those claims, how they're treating those claims, how long it's taking them to, to deal with those claims and get those claims paid. This is our contact information, folks. And Mayor Stolzmann, I'll get this, if you tell me who I can get this slide deck to, I'll get it out to, to you all, so you can post it on the, on the city's website too. But this is our contact information, folks. If you have questions, please call us, mail us. We've got, we've got a whole team set up to help you all work through all issues related to the Marshall Fire. So please don't hesitate to reach out. So that's the data. Let me pause there before I get to the law and ordinance. And actually, let me, one last piece on the data before. So the data, the data call was due yesterday. And as always the case with data calls, it's going to take us a while. We know that we have holes in the data. We had We know that we have holes in the data. We had some companies that didn't respond quite yet. We have some companies that didn't respond fully, so we're going to have to work through those issues. So it'll take us at least a couple of weeks to clean the data, to do QA on the data, get make sure that we have all of the correct data from the companies. So we're a couple of weeks out from being able to give anything related to actual results publicly at this point. But we're getting the information and we're the first state to do a data call of this magnitude related to a fire, a fire disaster like this. So there's a learning curve on our part, because in part, we've never done it and we didn't have anybody to learn from. So it's going to take us a little bit longer to turn the data around than than it would otherwise. But we're getting the data and we'll have, we'll have some data out there in the next few weeks in order for people to really kind of react to and and find solutions for. So Mayor, why don't I pause there before I get to the law and ordinance? Because I just shot a bunch of information at you and see if I can stop sharing here and just answer questions for folks about the data. And then I'll get into the law and ordinance coverage components too.
Thank you, Commissioner. So at the end of the night, if you send the slides to me, I can get them to the city clerk, no problem. And so council members, you have any questions on the data that we'll be getting back? Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you very much for being with us, Director. We really appreciate your time and the structure around what you put together. The the question I have is, you know, on behalf of of all those people that lost their homes, how did they use this data themselves? I know how we would use it or how you would use that data, but for somebody who lost their home, how does that help them?
So thank you for the question. So it's, I don't know that it'll be usable at the individual basis, to be completely candid with you. I think it's going to be more at the policy level of how do we find solutions and and what's and what what's the what's the gap that we need to close and find solutions for that gap? Whether it's usable at the individual level, I think is is a bit of a different question. And I'm not positive that it will be usable at the individual level. In part, we're going to have to put data out at aggregate. So we won't be able to give folks individual, individualized information now. There may be, there may be an ability for people to use that aggregate information in all sorts of different ways for them to to advocate for policy changes, for them to have conversations with the community. I don't want to, I don't want to guess is all the different ways that folks might want to use the data. But that's the that's the great thing about data, that when you put it out into the public, it can be used in all sorts of different ways to to accomplish things.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you, Mary. Yes, and thank you, Mr. Conway, for being here and giving us this information. My question is on the replacement cost issue. A lot of people have purchased their policies at an inception date that was perhaps 25, 30 years ago. If they haven't updated or renewed their policy, is the is the renewal date or the replacement cost based on what it would have cost 30 years ago to rebuild? Or what it would cost today to rebuild? Are they covered for the full amount to replace their home today? The way that they purchased it or or first built it 30 years ago?
Sure. So thanks for the question. So their policies actually renew at least every year. Your policy renews every year with your insurance company, for the most part. At least I can't think of any companies out there that don't have at least an annual renewal. And but directly to your question, the the replacement cost coverage, we're, it's the coverage, the amount that would be would be necessary to replace the home today subject to the policy limits. So the policy limit should have grown over time as well, along with along with the 20 to 30 years that the folks own their home. But it's not the replacement cost at inception. It's the replacement cost of what it would cost to replace the home today.
And so if you insured your home and you had renewed and updated your policy every year and it said full replacement, it would still be full replacement today's prices?
You mean guaranteed replacement? In in the insurance world, the the terms matter, and I know it's a pain in the tuck. So for guaranteed replacement, yes, it it would be for guaranteed, if that's what you're talking about, council member, it would be today's prices.
But if it was not guaranteed replacement, then it wouldn't be today's prices? It would be whatever percentage you had negotiated with the insurance company?
It would still be today's prices, but the policy limit will be very, very important in that in that situation. Now, the extended replacement cost coverage will be based off of that policy limit though, too. So that'll, that if they, if the if the consumer had that or if the homeowner had that coverage in place, it would be on top of whatever the policy limit is. But the what the what the estimate that they'll be getting and what they're covered for is the the building costs today, again, subject to whatever policy limits that they have in place.
Okay, and then continuing on that line of thinking, does that also imply to the contents of insurance coverage? Do they get today's replacement? You know, if you're talking about, I bought a sofa 20 years ago, do I get today's replacement cost for a new sofa?
So you do, but it gets complicated quickly because it's because it's insurance. So the way that it works, council members, you, the the insurance company will do, will depreciate the value of that 20 year old sofa. And they'll pay you initially that depreciated value of the sofa. When you replace the sofa, they'll they'll pay you the difference between that depreciated amount for that 20 year old sofa and what it costs you to buy the new sofa.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Most?
So under Colorado state law, you have to offer law and ordinance coverage when people purchase their policy and when they renew their policy. Is that correct? Did I hear you say that?
That's correct. That law went into effect, I believe, in 2013.
So what happens if someone wasn't offered that coverage?
If they, if they weren't offered the coverage, they should file a complaint with us.
Okay.
Thank you. So Commissioner, if you would like to tell us about ordinance and law coverage, then we'll go to the members of the public for comment.
Sure. So ordinance and law coverage, there's a few couple, just a few things to think about when you're thinking about law and ordinance coverage. So law and ordinance coverage, it's a percentage of the coverage A. And so it's a percentage of the dwelling. And typically, it's someplace in the 10 to 20% range of of coverage A. So using a $500,000 house, it's $500,000 to $100,000 worth of coverage if you had law and ordinance coverage someplace in that in that realm of things. So what that is designed to do is to cover the cost of any building code upgrades at a very kind of basic level, at 120,000 foot level of understanding from the time you purchased your home until you lost your home and you're rebuilding. The reason why it gets a little bit complicated, if you improved your home in that period of time, you probably had to come up to code in a number of different ways and it wouldn't cover that portion of the the building code that you came up to code on, your coverage A would. But leaving that piece aside, leaving the weeds aside, what's one of the things that's important to think about as you're having these conversations is if the if if the law ordinances aren't in place, that coverage doesn't, it doesn't get paid out to consumers, doesn't get paid paid out to homeowners. So for example, if the if a homeowner in Superior versus a homeowner in Lewisville had the exact same law and ordinance coverage, but they the home in Superior didn't have to come up to code at the same level as Superior, they may not get the same amount of money as the homeowner in Lewisville would in order to come up to code. That money will just not get paid if it's not, if it's not necessary to come up to the building codes that are in place at the time that the loss was incurred. So that's the, that's the the very, very basic kind of outline of how law and ordinance coverage works. I know based on some of the conversations that I've had with folks, that you all have, I think, some more detailed questions about kind of hypotheticals that could be in play. So happy to walk through any of those if it would help kind of illustrate the conversation that you all are having.
Any other questions on this one? We'll have a more of a chance for questions and comments after public comment. Commissioner, do you want to tell the community anything before we take public comment, just to answer any other questions? I know you've been working on a lot of issues around particular complaints. Do you have any high level overview on some of the types of complaints you're seeing and where you see those going?
Sure, Mayor. So we've got, the the complaints really are are kind of in some core buckets. They're they're issues that you all are very well aware of. The the inventory, we're still getting a lot of complaints about inventory requirements that some companies have in place. We're getting complaints about related to that contents coverage and and folks not getting paid out as quickly as they would like for contents coverage. We're getting a lot of complaints, starting to be complaints related to that issue that I touched on earlier that we've, with the folks that are underinsured. They they're looking at the estimate that they are the replacement cost that they that were, that they have in their policy that they were bound for. And then they're getting the estimate from their insurance company using a different software program. And those numbers don't match up and don't come close to each other at all. And they've got a lot of heartache and a lot of consternation, understandably, about that issue. On the first two issues, on the the contents coverage and the and the inventory requirements. So we made a host, we made five asks of insurance companies. And this is somewhat breaking news that I'm sharing with you all, that we'll put some more detail around and and announce publicly in the next four or five days, put a press release out. But we asked insurance companies to step up and and do five things in order to help consumers, help homeowners that that are dealing with the Marshall fire as we sit here right now. Two of the big ones were to streamline contents, coverage requirements, inventory requirements in a number of different ways. The second one was to pay out contents, coverage up to 60% of the policy limits without requiring an inventory. The vast majority of companies agree to both of those. And we're going to put out some information, like I said, later this week, into next week about what the companies agreed to exactly and what they agreed to, both on the percentage and on the streamlining of of the the inventory requirements. But hopefully, that'll provide at least some relief to folks in the short term. We still have a lot of work to do. We still have a ton of work to do related to the under insurance problems. And we still have a lot of questions, but I'm happy and thankful that the companies at least stepped up to do those those pieces.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And so we'll turn it over to the members of the community. If you have any comments or questions, this is your time. And so you'll have two minutes each. Please tell us your name and where you live, and then tell us what you'd like to tell us. First, we have Chris Fuller.
Hi, hello everyone again. Hello, Commissioner Conway. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Hi, Commissioner, I just wanted to ask you, because, look, I certainly, oops. Are you all still there? Oh, sorry, that was just.
We're still here. Yeah, sorry, the timer.
So obviously, a lot of different insurance carriers involved, you know, up up here in Marshall Fire land. And I believe State Farm has the lion's share of the claims. I am with State Farm for what it's worth. It it does seem that they are kind of an outlier from what we've understood with, you know, the community and Slack and a lot of people sharing their stories and trying to help each other understand the reality on the ground here. And, you know, many of the larger players, it does seem are, you know, immediately paid out 75%, 80%, possibly even more. And I guess my question then specifically would be, first, why, why ask only 60% when many of them were already exceeding that? Why wouldn't you shoot higher, dare I ask? Obviously, there's a place to come down to. But had you perhaps shot for a higher percentage than maybe carriers like State Farm would have been more willing to align with some of the other carriers and go ahead and and allow 75%? So that just makes it that much easier for those of us perhaps to say, you know what? That's good. I I I can, I can avoid the headache of going through the inventory. And I guess the only other sort of follow up to that I was just going to ask you is everything you're working on, you know, I applaud you, I I really hope that it has teeth, you know, and 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 will ultimately affect change to to the insurance industry, at least in for those who want to participate in Colorado. I I guess my question is, do you, do you foresee that, you know, any legislation, anything you're doing now might have any impact in the short term for those of us now as opposed to, well, future policy holders? Which is wonderful if that happens, you know, we all want everyone to be in a better position with their insurance. But you foresee any practical, actual changes with regards to, you know, this, the under insurance problem? Or even more to the point, you know, the having to come up with the the estimates that, you know, dispute their estimates, which are clearly well below realistic construction costs here in Boulder County?
Thank you for your comment. And then Commissioner, we'll just keep track of the questions. And then if you want to take them at the end of the comment period. Next, we have Catherine Custer.
Sorry, hi. We, Catherine Custer, 671 Pine, West Pine in Lewisville. We bought our 3,500 square foot home after Thanksgiving, and we lost it a month later. When we bought the insurance in mid-November, I knew that concurrent construction costs run at least $400 a square foot. So that's the coverage I wanted. The State Farm agent balked that that was way too high. After a great deal of back and forth, we bought a policy for $240 a square foot. As you know, the city of Louisville has issued guidance that 325 a square foot is the expected minimum cost for rebuilding. So I thought initially that my main problem was under insurance. This week, we finally received State Farm settlement letter for our dwelling content. They are offering an actual cash value of $140 a square foot and a replacement cost of $184 a square foot. That's a little more than 50% of Lewisville's estimated rebuild cost. For instance, a 12 foot two by four in the settlement is quoted as $3. That board is currently $15 to $18 each, according to Lumber indexes. To recap, Lewisville City rebuild estimate, 325. My coverage, 240, and State Farm's offer, 140. I don't even know where to begin to contest these valuations, which are so far off reality as to be laughable or offensive. It's the fox guarding the hen house to have the entity responsible for rebuilding my home get to unilaterally decide how much that cost will we, to rebuild will be. On one more note, State Farm is not approving the loss of use beyond December 2022. That means that I am unable at this time to sign a year lease. And I'm effectively unable to find a comparable property to rent, since most single family homes want a year lease at a minimum. I suspect that State Farm's approach is a deliberate and craven effect to exhaust and demoralize already traumatized people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Wernoski.
All right, hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Stolzmann and counsel. And thank you, Commissioner Conway, for all the work that you're doing. I I have a couple of comments and then I wanted to ask a couple of questions. Just wanted to say, I am also actively involved on the Slack channel. I know I've communicated with the Division of Insurance. Appreciate the things and the resources that you're putting towards this effort, Commissioner Conway. On the, I just wanted to say that on the content coverage, I appreciate the efforts. I've seen the drop in blood pressure among folks that are getting more upfront payout. I think it's noticeable and and it makes a difference in folks' attitude towards rebuilding. I also want to put ALE on the radar, because I certainly heard some concerns for folks that have the 12 month ALE. Obviously, it's a little premature at two months out. On under insurance, I have a few questions for you. One of them is, what data or information can you not get from insurance companies but is key and would really help you have the insights that you need? And I think you're aware of the community work that we're trying to do to gather some anecdotal and and data, which we'll be doing. But that would be a helpful question to answer. A second question that I have is, what kind of findings out of this data would prompt the division to decide that action is warranted on an enforcement sense that would benefit current fire survivors? So again, not prospective, but what and what would that look like? What's the jurisdiction's authority to do that sort of thing? So that, those are my two questions and I will yield the rest of my time. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And so it's my understanding that the Commissioner would like to answer the questions as we go. I'm because we have so many questions in the queue and a lot of work to get through. And so if people don't get all of their questions answered by the Commissioner, I just want to make available the resources of the Division of Insurance to be able to answer those questions in writing or from another meeting. But Commissioner, if you want to start answering some of the questions that have come up, but please be brief with your responses.
I promise I will, Mayor. So thank you, because I'm not smart enough to remember all the questions.
The first question was around, why ask for 60% of, why not go for a higher number?
Yep. So the 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 basic reason, or the basic reasons, I should say, that we we went with the 60% were kind of twofold. One, the representative of Mobley's bill, House Bill 1111 is at 65%. So we wanted to be in the same range as Representative Mobley's bill. And the 60% contents coverage is roughly about where the companies pay out. When we did a survey looking at total losses over the last five years, and that 60% of contents coverage is roughly where the companies paid out for total losses over the last five years. So we wanted to effectively put something together that that we thought that they would be able to respond to and respond to actively and affirmatively. And I think we'll see once we can, once we put the information out that that it actually paid. It was, it was a good approach simply because we got folks to say, yes, we got the companies to say yes. They didn't have to, folks. This was for the companies that were both, that were still at the 30%. They could have told me to pound sand. And that would have, and we would have been in a position where we didn't have any recourse. This was, they did this because we asked them to and and they're getting. This was, they did this because we asked them to, and they're getting money to Mr., Mark's last comment. They're getting money out to folks in a way that's helping. On the estimates component, that question, I know that that's an issue, right? That's an issue. It's an issue that's twofold. It's an issue like I was talking about before, where the estimates that folks are getting on the rebuild cost from some companies don't are double, if not more than what their, what the replacement cost coverage was on their policies. We've got lots of questions about why that's the case. And we're going to be working with the companies to understand why that's the case and trying to figure out solutions for that going forward. Related to the particular situation that you found yourself in, ma'am, that they're they're giving you a grossly, from your words, a grossly underestimate. I want you to reach out to our folks, and we can start to work through that with State Farm, and maybe maybe we'll have you file a complaint to to figure out what exactly State Farm is doing and why those estimates are so low. To Mark's questions about the information that we don't have on on the, related to the data call, we don't have information on what the rebuild costs are going to be, right? We know that there are a number of different sources out there of what the price per square foot is or what it may be. That's a bit obviously of a moving target for a whole bunch of reasons. One of which is that the rebuild is going to be, where the rebuild isn't happening today, so the price per square foot that we're working with is going to change over time. But we can at least do some, put together some estimates to see what we think are reasonable estimates of the price per square foot to give us, like I was talking about before, a picture of what we think the under insurance problem is going to be. As far as what triggers may be in place that would cause us to take an enforcement action, I'm not going to get in front of where we may or may not take an enforcement action and talk about publicly what triggers may or may not cause us to take an enforcement action for a whole host of reasons, but one, most of which because we, I haven't looked at the data and we haven't analyzed the data, so I just don't know where those triggers may fall. But it's going to be an issue that we're definitely looking at to see what we can do to help folks.
Thank you. Next, we have Christian Dino.
Yes, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Christian Dino, 967 Eldorado Lane. My question is in regards to the codes and ordinances in terms of where that starts. So, you know, assuming that it's a 30-year-old home that has had some some upgrades done, where it's had the upgrades to current code, those would obviously not be able to go under that. But aside from that, any upgrades that had not been done over the course of the last 30 years would all be subject to use that pot of money.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we have Frank and Debbie Price.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Conway and the Council for giving us this great information tonight. We're at A37 Trail Ridge Drive. We had a total loss in our situation. We're working with Allstate as our insurance provider. I think contrary to others out there, Allstate as a company has been pretty transparent and helpful in a lot of ways. Nevertheless, on Cover J, we're still underinsured. And despite your comments, Commissioner, about where the numbers really are, I don't think it's debatable that there's a systemic problem across many insurance companies in the industry with the calculations with the software and how this is done. I suspect that at the end of the day, Allstate will help us reach our policy limits, which is a win in of itself, and I know others are struggling with that, and my heart goes out to them. But once you reach your policy limits, in a case like ours where we moved into Louisville less than two years ago, had a new policy put in place, not a 30-year-old one, that we managed our insurance, that we asked that the renewal, if we were adequately covered, and even within our policy, had a statement that costs were declining, and we could reduce our coverage. I question whether or not we have some recourse with Allstate for our under insurance, particularly filing a claim against errors and emissions insurance. Maybe you could speak to that, Commissioner Conway, whether that's a path you recommend or holding off on, because ultimately, you know, we had the wrong policy in place. It's not about getting more out of our policy. It's about, you know, debating. We are not the experts. Implications that are out there, that homeowners are responsible for this are erroneous. They're the experts. They drive the software, and many cases, they have gotten this way wrong. And I hope we can all acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Conway.
Sure. So Mr. Price, and Mr. Price, I think you and I have talked before, but apologize if I'm mixing you up with somebody else, but regardless. So on the the errors and emissions piece, sir, I can't give you legal advice about whether you should file a claim against your agent's errors and emissions policy. But I don't, don't, I apologize if I gave the impression that I think that there isn't a systemic problem out there with under insurance. I do think that there is a systemic problem with under insurance. And I think it's a problem that we have to find solutions for, and you have my commitment to work to find those solutions. Where Allstate is concerned, that I've been told that those statements are out there, that they have encouraged folks to decrease coverage over the last couple of years. It's something that we'll be looking into and to get a better understanding of why that's the case. But please, I completely agree with you that we do have a systemic problem that we have to find solutions for. It's not going to be something that, at least if I have anything to say about it, that we don't find solutions for going forward at the very least.
Thank you. Next, we have John Marlin.
Hi there. This is John Marlin. I apologize, my audio was cutting out, so if I'm asking your question that was was already asked, please, please shut me up. On the law and ordinance coverage, Commissioner Conway, you said that the law and ordinance applies based upon the ordinances at the time of the loss. So, as you probably know, there's a, there's been a lot of discussion about whether Louisville might roll back some some codes that they implement at the very end of last year. But it sounds like from what you're saying, that even if they rolled those codes back today, those codes were in effect on December 30th, and that I could still build to those codes and and claim that that OL coverage on that basis. Am I, am I hearing that right? And I'll yield the rest of my time.
Sure. No, that's, so you're correct that I wasn't clear enough. Let me say that way. So typically, when we, when, the reason why I said at the time of loss is when when folks, if you if you don't have a disaster like we have now, that somebody, if somebody, if there's a sole home that was lost, and a city very well may way change their their building codes between the time of that loss and the time that the home was fully rebuilt. Depending on the policy language, that in that situation, that additional code coverage may not be covered. That's the reason why I said it that way. It's actually an open question that we're that we're starting to unpack within the division related to that scenario, that if law and ordinance, if a building code was was withdrawn or rolled back, whether that law and ordinance coverage would actually be paid out to to policyholders. I don't believe we have anything specific in state law on that question. We got it. We need to, we need to kind of dig into the our statutes and our regs to make sure that I'm right about that. If I'm right about that, then it's going to depend upon the policy language itself. And my guess is that most policies would, it would be the case that the law and ordinance coverage wouldn't be paid, but that's just my guess. So we need to do some more work on that front.
Thank you. And just seeing the number of comments that we still have, Commissioner, maybe I would encourage the Division of Insurance to hold another town hall where we can do question and answer in this format, because we do have a lot of business to get through tonight. So we'll keep in public comment on this, but it looks like people have questions that they absolutely should submit to the Division of Insurance, and that we should absolutely facilitate another town hall so people can ask their specific questions.
Just a, just a follow-up and I point real quick, Mayor, then I'll shut up, I promise. So we're going to have, once we get the data to the point that we're ready to to talk about it, and it's clean, and we can make it public, we'll have another town hall at that point, and folks can come and ask all their questions, and we'll hang out all night. But please, to the mayor's point, don't wait for that. If you have questions, reach out to us beforehand, too.
Thank you. And I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to rush people along, but there has been a lot of communication to the council to try to get some action this evening. And so my concern is that if we don't get to the point of action, that people will be frustrated, and council still hasn't had to have had the time to have a conversation on some of the agenda items. So I am just sensitive to the community input that we've received. Next, we have Tammy Owen.
Mayor, I'm not seeing a microphone showing up from Ms. Owen.
I'm sorry, Tammy, you can call in on your phone. There's a number that you can call in, or sometimes people, when they log out and log back in, have success with getting their microphone hooked up differently. Next, we have Karen McCready.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. But first, I'd like to say thank you for hosting this tonight. We have State Farm and my name's Karen McCready. We live at 10, or we did live at 1043 Timber Circle. We have State Farm and are dealing with all the issues you've already heard about. Tonight, I want to ask about the additional coverage. We had a call today with our State Farm adjuster, and she indicated that State Farm was offering 50%, not 60%. And I also was sent several documents to sign that are somewhat legal, so I said I would take them and take a look at them. Of course, I'm not a legal person. Is the Division of Insurance aware of what State Farm's doing, and should I send the documents down? Or where should I go to have the documents looked at? Thank you.
Commissioner Conway.
Sure, Mayor. So we are aware that that State Farm and one other company agreed to go to 50%, not the full 60%. As far as those documents are concerned, I have seen them. I haven't taken a hard look at them, but ma'am, even if I had, I wouldn't be able to provide you with legal advice. But you can certainly reach out to us, and we can walk you through kind of the, what what they're asking for and what's in the document and help you understand it.
Thank you. Next, we have Joshua Smith.
Hi, yes, I'd like to defer my time to Lawrence Smith.
Is it Lawrence Smith? Will you raise your hand so we can get you unmuted, or City Clerk, please, can you find Lawrence Smith? I don't see Lawrence Smith in the attendee list. Joshua, do you have her there with you?
I did this.
It's Lawrence.
There you go.
Oh, there we go.
Not now. I have, I have a statement regarding the building codes later. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tammy Owen. Tammy, we can't hear you. It doesn't look like you're muted on your end, and we do see a microphone, but we cannot hear you. So we'll go ahead and take Brandon Garcia.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, excellent. Yes, this was just a follow-up question on the ordinance and law coverage, and I'll keep it short since we're running out of time. But, you know, basically, you know, there's talks about repealing codes, but is it also true that any code from, you know, basically, I know there's a lot of caveats involved, but any code change that was enacted since the time of construction would also be applicable to that coverage? It's not just the latest and greatest portion of code. It'd be a a accumulation of all code changes, whether they be windows, insulation, any of those types of coverage. Thank you. I yield my time.
Commissioner?
Sure, yeah, that's basically correct with the the exception of what we talked about earlier. If you've made improvements on the home from the point when it was built to the point when it was lost, then it's likely the case that you came up to code during that period of time or when you made those improvements, but generally speaking, yes, you're right.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, everyone, for the public comment on that section tonight. So there there has been and continues to be a lot of interest in this insurance issue, and we understand that this is a bulk of stress for everyone, so we will continue to have updates from the Commissioner and try to bring resources to the community on this topic. And I want to thank the Commissioner for coming this evening and providing us this information. If you send those slides to me, we'll get those posted on the site as quick as we can for folks, and we'll work on scheduling another community meeting. It looks like there's interest to ask additional specific questions. And in the meantime, people can contact you through that email or that phone number that you listed there for us and can continue to ask questions in that fashion. People do not have to wait for a public meeting to ask their questions and get answers. Any other final comments or questions on this topic from council members? All right, seeing that, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, that takes us to our next agenda topic this evening, which is discussion direction on building code considerations. I'll turn it over to Lisa Ritchie for a staff presentation. Good evening, Lisa.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members of the public in attendance tonight. I'm going to share my screen. In addition to myself, I just want to acknowledge that we have also in attendance and available for questions, Anna McCullough with Group 14. She is the author of the Group 14 Report. We have Chad Root, our Chief Building Official. We have Rob Zuccaro, the Planning and Building Safety Director. And then I also see Chief John Wilson in the audience. If there's any questions related to fire sprinklers, as we might touch on that a little bit if you have questions. So this is following up from a previous city council meeting on February 1st, where City Council asked for additional information in follow-up regarding primarily energy codes as it relates to properties affected by the Marshall fire. I know City Council has seen this, but I do have some of these introduction slides in here for the benefit of everyone watching. So City Council adopted the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code, the IECC, with amendments, and the Residential Net Zero Appendix. That's Appendix RC, which probably will be how we refer to that this evening. That was adopted on October 19th. The previous standard in place was the 2018 IECC with Louisville-specific amendments. Generally, the adopted code that we recently adopted included electric vehicle readiness, electric ready, solar readiness appendix, which was also in place in 2018, as well as the Residential Net Zero appendix. And while this doesn't directly relate to Louisville's specifics amendments, the Department of Energy Analysis indicates that the 2021 IECC results in roughly 9% energy savings over the 2018, and a 51% energy savings over the predominant energy code in the early 1990s. And so as a result of the fire, we understand that there's, you know, we now have a significant number of single-family homes that will need to be reconstructed. And so we wanted to understand from the city staff perspective to help inform City Council's decision-making what the anticipated cost impact of the recently adopted code. And so we modeled, want to be clear that we modeled the average home that was lost, and we just need to make sure we're clear on that, that this is a range. All of the numbers that we're talking about this evening are a range of numbers. And so we modeled this after 2820 square foot, four-bedroom, three-bath home, two stories. We relied on cost estimates from two of our local Louisville home builders, Boulder Creek Neighborhoods and Markel Homes. And we can talk through this a little bit, but we modeled different scenarios. And so I just want to share some key points before we dive into the numbers. Want to make it clear that, again, we are modeling the average home, and this includes costs for the Louisville market. Costs for each individual home that need to be constructed are going to vary based on multiple factors and cost estimate. We're just trying to provide a high level of review of anticipated costs. And also just want to acknowledge for everyone that this study was developed solely to understand the general cost factor to redevelop properties affected by Marshall fire. So there's a number of other cost studies that are out there related to energy code implementation and different codes, and we're not here to discredit those. We just want to acknowledge that our study was done specifically for Louisville. And again, that these are based on costs provided by two local builders in January and February of 2022, that there's no requirement that home builders match these prices, and that supply chain, labor market, construction materials, all will impact final cost. And so with that, with the current code that we have in place, which will again dive deeper into the numbers, we find that the lowest first cost, which when we say first cost, we are using the term as it relates to construction materials that need to go into the home. So the lowest first cost to meet the current code is just shy of $20,000, and that would be the 2021 IECC with the Louisville amendments, if they build with natural gas and meet Appendix RC. And that would be the 2021 IECC with the Louisville amendments, if they build with natural gas and meet Appendix RC. Following the last meeting on February 1st, we were really hopeful that we would have some incentives get finalized. And so to date, we can acknowledge that Excel has offered a rebate of $7,500 directly to homeowners that were affected by the Marshall Fire, if the community has the 2021 codes in place. And then they also have additional incentives that you can see on the screen here. And these vary, and we did not model the cost difference of all of these different incentives or cost to build. So I can't, I can't argue tonight one way or the other if these were intended to recoup the cost or just offset the cost. And additionally, which I think is really great news, is that Sunshare Community Solar, it's a community solar garden, has agreed to offer access to every homeowner affected by the Marshall Fire, access into a solar garden that's becoming online here in the next year. And the intent of this, or I guess the overview of this, is that they would be offering no cost to access, so no kind of enrollment fee or annual fee, and they would match, basically match the utility rate of Excel. So this essentially gets the renewable piece to a cost-neutral perspective. So they still would have their energy costs. They don't get their energy use covered for free, but it matches the Excel rate, where previously, our previous analysis indicated that the solar garden piece was going to be higher than the Excel rate. So that's good news on the two incentives that we know about this time. We do acknowledge that there's a number of other entities continuing to work hard to formalize incentives, including the state of Colorado and solar companies, things like that. But to date, these are the ones that are firm. And so with that, we're going to dive into the numbers. This first slide reflects Louisville's current code. So the later slides look at some other iterations. But basically, this is if to meet the code that is in place today, if they built with natural gas. Again, you're looking at just shy of $20,000 to meet the code. And then the next column is the annual energy cost. And this is in here to just reflect that anticipated cost of energy over time as you build to these different codes. So you can see here, for example, the net, the natural gas cost, annual energy cost is slightly higher than if you build with electric. And again, noting that there's the $7,500 incentive from Excel that both of these would qualify. The all-electric costs to build to all-electric does back out the cost of running natural gas lines into the home, some other fine tuning that we did with our home builders, but that cost is slightly higher at roughly $22,300. Again, though, your annual energy costs are a little bit less, and the Excel rebate is shown here. Next, we continue to refine numbers for iterations that are not currently adopted. And so I want to explain a little bit here. In addition to modeling on the previous slide, what is currently adopted, we looked at other options for cost impact. And so again, all of these are based on the baseline of the 2018 IECC with Louisville amendments, using that as a baseline. And then these are the incremental differences. These are not additive. It's just kind of a one-to-one comparison on what it would take to meet that code. And so in addition to the Group 14 costs, the Pacific Northwest National Lab, we worked with them to kind of transparently show our cost estimates. And then they also updated their analysis that was provided to the previous city council packet to reflect state of Colorado pricing. Just want to, just want to note, this is state of Colorado pricing, not Louisville or Boulder County specific pricing. And it just included like access more or cost estimates available more generally, not specific bids from home builders. So want to clarify that that's, helps explain that difference there. And so you can see here on the slide, I won't go through these all, but these are the different iterations of costs. So basically, the 21, 2021 IEC as written, that would be roughly $6,400 under the Group 14 analysis. The 2021 IEC as amended, that Louisville, you know, adopted as our base code if they built to natural gas. And then the 2021 IECC as amended, if they build all-electric. And really, the savings here on the all-electric side is not running the natural gas infrastructure into the home. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. We can dive into the data more. I have more backend data if we need. But I know City Council has seen this before, and I know you want to leave time for dialogue and questions.
Thank you, Planner Ritchie. And so we'll go ahead and take public comment at this time on this agenda item this evening. So anyone who would like to make any comments, please raise your hand and let us know your name and then your address. And then tell us what she'd like to tell us. First, we have David H.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Okay, Dave House, and I used to live at 949 Larchburg Lane, total loss. I had written this for three minutes, so please forgive any curtiness. I'm going to try to be fast. My wife and I are fairly physically responsible. We had no debt except for our mortgage. We were going to pay that off in two to three years prior to the 30th. On the 30th, that dream has been destroyed. It's not coming back. We thought the insurance company was going to come and save the day. They didn't. We're half a million dollars short of rebuild. For us, that's an ever-sized mountain on a bad weather day to climb. We need help. And the community's been fantastic. We've gotten so much stuff from them, rallying around us, free stores, some charitable monetary stuff. And so that's been great. And I'm sorry if this sounds harsh. I feel like the council has been the opposite, charging us for rebuilding with net zero and possibly a rumored wildland urban interface ordinance that may be coming up in a few months. We need decreased costs, not more. You might say, well, Law &amp; Order is there to cover it. My Law &amp; Order is 10%. That's $35,000. If we just look at sprinklers, that's around 15K plus the net zero, that's the 30K. Everything else after that is out of pocket. And there's been a lot of code update changes from insulation, framing, electrical plumbing, radon, all sorts of stuff. I need that money to pay for windows and flooring and other things I need in the house. You might say, well, what if you guys pay for it? That'd be great. If I can get 100% guarantee that I'm going to get 100% coverage, then that would be great. Unfortunately, I don't think you guys can make that commitment because of the market. And so for that, I think it needs to be suspended because there's not enough information. We don't know what it's going to be a year from now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Kristen T.
Hello, my name is Kristen Tudonio. I actually live in Frazier, Colorado, which is the icebox. It's a town that has the coldest annual temperature in the lower 48 states. And the reason I'm joining you today, one is to just say, my heart truly goes out to everyone who lost their homes and who is now undergoing the stress of trying to deal with insurance and rebuild their homes. My comments today are just limited because I've heard that there's some concerns about heating a home with a cold climate heat pump. And I just wanted to offer perhaps one little bit of observation that might ease some of the stress. And that is that we recently built a net zero home here in Frazier, Colorado, that utilizes cold climate heat pumps for heating, and it works fantastic. We're going on our second winter here. Our energy bills are extremely low. In fact, they're lower now in our full house than they were with the small apartment that we used to live in, mostly thanks to the savings from those cold climate heat pumps. So as you all are rebuilding, if you have concerns, they work down well below zero degrees. In fact, we've had days where it was negative 18, and they're still functioning just fine. So if anyone's interested, you know, we'd be happy to show you how they work here or share the energy data and consumption with you. And then also, our house plans, if anyone's interested, are freely available from Sea Boulder. Our house design was for the solar decathlon competition and it won first place last year. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Maria McClure.
Hi, Maria McClure, 105 Cherrywood Lane was where my family's home was at. And I'd like to say that I'm happy to hear Lisa at least acknowledge that these estimates are the low end. When they were portrayed to us, I can't even remember when, because we have Zoom meetings every night to attend while we're navigating insurance and figuring out how we're going to rebuild. But the estimates are really obfuscation. That's the word I can think of. When you come out and you tell us that you know it's going to cost $20,000 for us to rebuild, that is so inaccurate that it is, it's insulting. We have a wide range of cost estimates, anywhere from 20,000 to 150,000 per home. And when people are struggling to just rebuild what we had, it feels like you are not listening to us. I would like to echo what somebody said earlier, that I was really happy to see Chris Lee and Caleb Dickinson at our protest. We are angry. We are hurt. We are upset. And you are adding insult to injury. You really are, by not listening to us. And it feels like you have an agenda. You know, the 9% energy efficiency over 2018 code, I would like to know where those numbers come from. A lot of these numbers are being portrayed to us like they're solid and they're reliable. When every builder we have talked to, we spent countless hours on Zoom meetings talking to them. They will not commit to any of these numbers. It's really not helping us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Caskirk.
Hello, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I'm Mark Caskirk of Sweet Clayville Lane in Louisville. Thank you for hearing me tonight and allowing Kate Ripley to pull time with me. Over our home in Louisville was built in 2014. As we've heard from staff tonight, my neighbors and I, around 100 homes, were given no choice about the sprinklers and many other requirements that would become the 2018 building code. Among many other things, it is wrong to complain that domestic sprinklers won't prevent a wildfire. They are designed to stop a fire inside your home. Given the right conditions, a fire inside your home will become the next wildfire. It can spread from your home to your neighbors and potentially to the rest of the city. I installed the largest solar system Excel would permit for my home. I've never paid an electric bill in six years I've lived here. Oil and gas are a global commodity. Prices are set by global market conditions. In contrast, electricity is a US market. Domestic and residential gas prices are surging due to the Ukraine crisis, but it didn't need Ukraine for it to happen. The gas price hit a historical high in August 2021. Excel has already applied to the state to max out their price cap for this year. I would have installed a heat pump, but my builder wouldn't offer it as an option. Instead, I'm stuck wondering when and how I should convert. It's hard to imagine a world where we are advocating to change building standards to allow climate-damaging and even an ever-more-expensive fuels over the safety of our community. The UK government has committed to convert all homes to heat pump systems by 2050. I'm old enough to remember when they converted all homes from coal to gas following the smog crisis in the 50s and the environmental and health impact the smog had. Many of the current Louisville standards protect the indoor environment from both cold, heat, and airborne pollutants. But here we are, residents demanding a waiver to allow them to build less efficient, less resilient homes without barrier protection, without sprinklers, with lower insulation, and lower air quality protection. If the Marshall Fire victims build to the new standards, their homes will be more valuable, while the rest of us are left scrambling to retrofit ours. It's not the end of the world, but it is the end of the world as we've known it for the last 50 years. By allowing these homes to be rebuilt to a lower standard, potentially makes them little more than tinderboxes that can engulf the rest of the city. Whilst we all hope that the Marshall Fire will never happen again, we are denying reality if we think it won't. Climate change is real. Resilience and energy efficiency are the only way we, as individuals and as a community, can impact what's happening. Please stand firm on the building codes and look for ways to fund and help the Marshall Fire victims based on the current standards. I, for one, would like to thank you all for the service to our community in these difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to make it clear to folks, if people do pull time, the person that you're pulling time with will not be given the opportunity to speak. Next, we have Susan Nettle. I'm sorry, Susan Nadell.
Thank you, Ashley. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, thank you to the City Council. Thank you to the staff. Thank you to everybody who has been working tirelessly to help us Marshall Fire victims rebuild in a sustainable manner and understand the requirements. I must say that I'm heartbroken to hear so many of my neighbors and community members pushing so hard to roll back the 2021 standards. We are in the midst of a climate crisis. And if we, as relatively well-off Louisville residents, can't build back in a more sustainable manner, who are, who is left to show the way? I am also underinsured. We will also have to take out an additional loan. We were thinking that we also would be pretty free and clear when we retire in five or so years, but our plans have changed. But I can tell you, it is so important to me to see that we are trying as hard as we can to build in a more sustainable, lower greenhouse gas, more resilient homes. So there's a chance that our children and their children will have an earth that's habitable in the future. So please, we, there are resources that the state is offering. We heard about some other resources. You know, there's, there's a chance that we can be made up the difference between the 2018 and the 2021 codes with all these resources. Stay firm, be bold, don't be scared. This is a time for action. We need to stop digging the hole deeper. We need to start climbing out of this hole of greenhouse gas emissions. So please, stand firm and keep those, keep the 2021 codes and the net zero. I plan to figure out how to do it for my home.
Thank you. Next, we have M. Stone Smith.
Hi, thanks for taking time to listen to me. I met Stone Smith. I lived at 1164 West Enclave Circle in Louisville. We lost our home. The idea that somehow, but somewhere between $5,000 and $20,000 is going to accommodate the change for the extra 9% benefit is absurd. And I've heard from many, many builders about this. But I know that that doesn't carry any weight with the council. I've been expressed, I've heard expressed that we should provide details. So the Home Builders Association of Denver provided that. I'm sure you people are aware of this. I'm surprised it wasn't raised in the issue. On February 25th, they provided a letter that clearly stated that there's about an $80,000 increase specifically for 2018 to 2021 codes. The planning person earlier suggested that many of the assessments were not specific to Louisville. This is specific to the Marshall Fire in Louisville and specifically states that the building cost for 2018 codes was about $300 a square foot. Building cost for 2021 codes is $335 a square foot. And this was associated with a 2,400-square-foot house. That's $35 a square foot for 2,400 square feet. That's $80,000. The idea that this is a $5,000 change for 9% is false. The benefits from 2018 to when my house was built in 2019 are huge. Don't make us spend $80,000 to get the last little bit.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Werenowski.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you, Mark Werenowski again. 926 Eldorado Lane. We lost our home in the fire. Um, I, uh, I have a request of the city if it's possible. So I appreciate the work that's been done to estimate the costs of the recent changes. Um, the, but it would be helpful to understand what codes, kind of a comprehensive list of codes that have happened. And if it's even possible to estimate costs around those. And really what I'm thinking about, and I know a lot of homeowners are thinking about is there's a lot of uncertainty. We'd like to maximize our insurance benefits. We'd like to find creative ways to, to get value. I personally would like to use all of my law and ordinance coverage and, and the Excel coverage. But I, I, what the information that I'm missing is what it all costs together. So um, just the 2018 to the 2021 is just a piece of the information and I don't have the context around the rest of it. So if there's a way for the City Council to do that, or the city to do that, I actually think that would be a huge benefit to homeowners as they, you know, struggle to find that value. Um, I, I will say that I'm, uh, personally, it's an empirical question to me if there, if it's possible to meet the codes uh, or largely meet those codes uh, and have a good portion of that paid for uh, with insurance coverage, with uh, Excel benefits and so forth. I'm, you know, I'm in favor of that, but, but it comes down to an empirical question and I certainly respect uh, that folks are all in different situations and may have, you know, different uncertainties and uh, know whether they can rebuild and may not have the same risk tolerance. So I want to, you know, note that respect. Um, but that kind of information would be really helpful to me and hopefully others. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Darlon Chan.
I'm Darlon Chan, a Norvato resident at 6876 Juniper Court. I'm here to support the Louisville Net Zero Code because of my personal experience in the Net Zero neighborhood. I moved my family to a Net Zero home in the Geos neighborhood three years ago. There were no methane gas pipelines in the neighborhood because none of the Geos Net Zero homes had any gas appliances. My family's Net Zero home was similar in cost to traditional homes in the area. Yet we had no gas bills and minimal electricity bills because our home generates more power and solar PV panels than it uses. On New Year's Eve, I found out that my friend and his family lost their home to the Marshall Fire. While competing with 1,000 other displaced families to find a temporary rental, they stayed at my home over New Year's weekend and marveled at how comfortable my home was with a geothermal heat pump and a conditioning energy recovery ventilator that checks for unhealthy carbon dioxide levels in the house and brings in fresh air heated by outgoing air as needed. My friend told me that after seeing what could be done with an all-electric house, he wanted his home to be rebuilt all-electric. While my friend was impressed by my all-electric home, I've heard that there is a disinformation campaign by Colorado Oil and Gas Industry Front Group called the Coloradans for Energy Access, which is formed by the industry to fight the transition away from dependence on fossil fuels. I left a nearly 16-year career at ExxonMobil because of my disgust with the lack of substantive action there to transition away from oil and methane gas before they become unaffordable and trigger runaway climate change. Methane gas prices were held artificially low over the last decade. A malinvestment in hydrologically fractured shale gas wells that are far inferior to conventional wells in production rate lifetime. I worked on both kinds of wells and my personal experience was that it took thousands of hydrologically fractured shale gas wells to equal the cumulative production of a single conventional gas well. This kind of malinvestment can only be profitable to the gas industry if future gas prices increase dramatically and homeowners are locked into gas. I invited the Louisville City Council to visit my neighborhood, which hosted the Golden City Council group to the City Council last year. There are 28 homes there showing why Louisville should retain the Net Zero Code.
Thank you for your comment. Next, Lawrence, Lawrence Smith.
Yes, hello. I'm pooling my time with Barbara Hickman uh, on this issue. So um, you know, most of us have to use a cost plus building approach, uh, which is very different actually than the economics of the two production builders that you're using for the cost estimates. Uh, project overruns are a real risk uh, in this kind of building approach. Um, and uh, we, none of us have buffer. Uh, we're all scratching our way to a rebuild. Um, including 100% of the O and L that we have. It's taking everything, including uh, not only the uh, the actual dwelling insurance, but also the content insurance. And then most of us are having to raise hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on top of that in additional funding. So what I find incredulous is that we're expected to scrape even further towards a newly enacted 2021 code. It's not just the actual cost, but it's also importantly the supply chain risk on those items as Boulder Creek builders highlighted in the last session. Um, with so many homes to rebuild, so few builders who understand the code and the supply chain issues, we have compounding project risk all along the way. We don't have a buffer in our funding. Uh, if I may, I'd like to suggest the right strategy would be to reduce the risk as much as possible. Pick a target of cost savings you can bring to us rebuilders and incent us like crazy to shoot for the highest possible energy efficiency in our rebuilds. We all want to do this. It's a matter of economics and given the choices and flexibility in what is a very hard rebuild path. Here's some examples. I disagree with my fellow Brit. Get rid of the sprinkle system requirement. Uh, that's a huge expense with limited ROI. Lower the sales and use tax in the minimum possible. Look at the cost of your permit process and spread that across the 500 rebuilds and you will remove 90% of the normal permit cost for home builders. Suspend the requirement to get to a 2021 code and that's zero, but blaze a trail for rebates and subsidies that give us the flexibility to choose to get there. We all want to get there. It's a matter of economics. Most of us over time added solar panels, purchased electric cars. It's not that we're against that kind of building. It's a matter of money. You could go a lot further. There's multiple ways in which you could spend your time and energy and looking for cost savings for us. But I think those uh, elements that I listed could save us $100,000 uh, in rebuilding cost and we need to get there. So in summary, um, you know, please put us in a position where we do not resent and question the motivations of this council. And we continue, and that we can continue to support and implement green initiatives as we move forward with our lives. Make it as optional as you can and show us incentives and drive us to get there in that way. That's going to be a lot more palatable for all of us who are struggling to find the funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have RJ Harrington.
Thank you, Council. RJ Harrington, 457 East Raintree Court. Did not suffer a total loss. I'd like to bring to folks' attention the concept of disaster capitalism. Uh, there's a book with that title, Making a Killing Out of Catastrophe. We heard a lot of references to that during Insurance Commissioner's presentation earlier tonight. And even prior to that, we heard City Manager Durbin reference the lawsuit that's now proceeding against the personal property debris removal that the county is attempting to undertake on our behalf. Also, there's been a lot of reference to the differences between 2018 and 21 code that it's not big enough to really make a difference. Uh, if you dive into the details on that whole code remaking process, uh, both the National Association of Home Builders and the American National Natural Gas Association had significant influence on those codes to make certain that they weren't uh, aggressively implemented or made even more aggressive. And so now we hear that the National Association of Home Builders is, is telling council how much more money it's going to cost to get to code. Disaster capitalism. What is the risk now versus the risk later? We have very recent news reports for the, from the International Panel on Climate Change. Their science says we are locking in these climate disasters as our neighbor Susan Nadell referenced earlier. One of the frequently asked questions is how will climate change affect the lives of today's children tomorrow? If no immediate action is taken? Some other recent science from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration reports prod, uh, that projects a century of sea level rise within the next 30 years.
Thank you.
Your environment program, the rise of threat of ordinary landscape fires continues. We must take action now. Do not roll back the codes.
Thank you, RJ. Next, we have Christian Dino.
Everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, Christian Dino, 967 Eldorado Lane. As far as the Home Builders Association report, I, I think that's very valid. Uh, you know, I actually spoke with the folks that put that together. It was comprised of half a dozen contractors all building in the Boulder area. And with that at $35 a square foot difference between the 2018 and 2021 code. If you multiply that by the 2,820 square foot that council and staff have presented as the average size home, that's $98,700 for the difference between the code. Now, I'm not against green initiatives. I actually plan to do most, if not all, of what's in this code regardless of what council chooses. But we should be asking what the folks that need this the most. There are going to be people that are minority outliers that taking every bit of insurance, taking every bit of SBA money, every bit of FEMA money. This code will be the difference between them rebuilding and them not. And if we have one neighbor that we say, I'm sorry, you're not important enough to allow to rebuild here. The cost of this code is too high. It's not about dollars. It's about people. That's all.
Thank you. Next, we have Marcia T.
I'm you. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Marcia Tinas and I am yielding my time to my husband Barney. He should have a hand raised.
Um, okay, Barney. I am not seeing your name in the queue. Are you, why don't, why don't, why don't you go, um, can you go together? I, we're not seeing his name in the list.
Okay.
Oh, there he is. Barney, we found you.
Oh, you found him? Thank you.
Uh, hi, Barney, Marcia, Barney Tinas, 821 West Mulberry Street. Uh, um, thank you, Council, for allowing me this opportunity to speak. Um, first, I'd like to explain ALI and dwelling clocks. Uh, the additional living expenses are a pool of money in homeowners policies separate from dwelling and personal property. The time limit to collect ALI is two years in some policies and only one year on others. Insurance companies will pay the fire victim's rent only until December 20th, December 30th, 2022 or 2023. After that, the homeowner is responsible for both their rent and the mortgage in their former home. There is also a two-year time limit to collect on dwelling coverage. So if construction isn't completed by then, fire victims may face a nightmare scenario where they can't collect 100% of their dwelling coverage. This is why a decision on building codes is urgently needed from city government. Second, we would like the city to prevent a more balanced view of the potential cost to rebuild. The static number of $20,000 or $4,800 does not represent the result, reality of the astronomical price of building materials, supply chain issues, or labor shortages. The fixed dollar amounts also emit the cost to implement a fire suppression system and the expense to comply with 2018 codes from homes built in 1992 and assumes the 7,500 Excel rebate is guaranteed, but it may not be. Councilmember Most herself cited an instance last Friday where the cost of co-compliance was $80,000 and HBA, which is an independent agency, estimates the cost at $35 a square foot. When the city underrepresents the true cost of the rebuild, it frames the fire victims as climate change deniers, which is not the case. The numbers from the building association should be weighted at least equally with those of sweep CO Inc. or 14 because the homeowners will be writing checks to builders, not consultants. We agree with the codes as they relate to greenhouse gas reduction and climate change impact. And we appreciate the willingness to explore funding options with state and other agencies. However, as the council continues to deliberate, it causes more anxiety, uncertainty, and frustration with fire victims as the ALI and dwelling clocks continue to tick. We ask that Louisville align with the compassionate, supportive spirit demonstrated by our surrounding communities in many areas across the country. Please consider exempting fire spires from compliance with 2021 ICC and a Pank's RC as adopted in 2021 as well as the 2015 requirement for residential sprinkler systems on new construction uh, for fire affected property. And thank you especially to council members Dickinson and Lay for their courage speaking from the podium uh, before a highly frustrated and concerned crowd this past Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Malik. I don't, City Clerk Mith, what did we lose? Mike?
Seems to have disappeared from our queue. If he wants to raise his hand again. All right, here we go.
We are not hearing you, Mike. You might be muted on your end.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. Uh, Mike Malik, 805 West Mulberry Street. We met with a builder this afternoon who said that there has not been a single building permit issued under the new codes because there has not been a single builder that's been able to comply with the new codes. I would just like Planning Director Richie to comment on that during your discussion. I yield my time. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve, Stephen Rusier. Sorry for not knowing how to pronounce your name.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, my name's Stephen Ruiz and I uh, live at 252 Lois Drive. I was unaffected by the fire, but uh, I have friends and my boss uh, who did lose homes in the fire. Um, I work with Fuente's Design uh, in Boulder and we do uh, zero energy homes uh, through the Boulder County area, including several in Lewisville. Um, and what we've found through the years is that if things are designed appropriately and using the correct techniques, that there, there's no additional cost um, over conventional construction. And uh, we've been doing this uh, for over 10 years um, and producing higher quality homes, more resilient, more comfortable to the homeowners um, throughout the, uh, throughout those 10 years and, and providing them at the same cost as other builders are providing code uh, minimum uh, construction. Um, I think the, you know, I'm not surprised by the fluctuating cost and I am, and, and I, and I feel for the victims um, or the, uh, the people that lost homes. Because of all this unknown, um, you know, builders are going to come in and they're going to just put a price tag on, on something, you know, and, and they're going to come in higher because they don't know, you know, how to do it or how to build it. Um, but I think, you know, one piece that, that the city can work with, with local builders and architects that, that do this kind of work and, and educate builders and homeowners on, on how to do these methods um, cheaply, uh, efficiently and uh, and I don't see it being a problem uh, rebuilding the community uh, at Net Zero and that would just be a huge uh, benefit to, to the community.
Thank you. Next, we have Shelley Angel. Hi, Shelley.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I'm Shelley Angel, 288 Lois Drive. Um, thank you, Mayor Ash, Mayor Stoltzmann and council members. There's no way to express how devastating this wildfire has been to our community. Unfortunately, my house was spared, but my heart and prayers goes out to all the people that weren't so fortunate. And I feel they need all the support they can get. I understand the new codes you have in place for sustainability are very important to our future. But the survivors are having a hard time navigating and living in the present. I feel they should be exempt from this new code. I realize that you have the code in place for new builds, but no one chose to have their house belongings ripped out from under them. And they didn't choose to rebuild because they wanted a new house. They literally have no choice. As I stated earlier, my house was spared and so my house stays exempt from the new codes. And I'm sure the people who lost their homes feel as if they're being punished since they weren't so fortunate. These new codes were put in place to help our future generations and to teach our children to protect our environment. But isn't it just as important to teach our children compassion and the importance of caring for our neighbors and the community we live in? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, um, we have the phone number ending in 8226.
Well, good evening. This is Sherry Summer at 910 South Palisade Court. I just want to start out by saying I'm really sad. Um, I mean, I'm sad about the homes lost, but I'm really sad for all the confusion. I just want to say, you know, City Council has been working really hard to find resources for people. FEMA is going to be covering so much of the FEMA is going to be covering so much of the debris removal. So many good things are happening. There's the Colorado Green Builders Guild. Excel is offering rebates. They've provided lists of qualified contractors. There's so many hands reaching out to, to help people, and I'm just really sad that it's so emotional that it, it seems like those hands are trying to hurt. And it's, I don't know, it's just, I, maybe I'm being too emotional, but I just would urge people to try to trust this process. It's going to take some time, but building a house is not easy, and as much as everybody would want to be in their home, it's not going to happen that fast, and it's better to, to think about it. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Rebecca Wayless.
Hello. Hi, thanks so much for, for allowing this time. I just want to speak from the standpoint, we lost our home nine zero six Eldorado Lane from an aspect of, you know, uncertainty and just touching upon the real uncertainty that every single one of us who have lost their homes, you know, as someone, we have felt the love of the community and the support of the community, but we are totally overwhelmed. And there's one piece of security and certainty that I feel like could be given to us with just an instant vote of allowing us to build back at the twenty eighteen level. That would be a huge improvement. Our house was built in nineteen ninety-one. All the, all the houses in our neighborhood was built, built in nineteen ninety-one. The enormous level of going up from a nineteen ninety-one home to a twenty eighteen codes already is going to be such a huge leap. So I would just ask the council to give the people who lost their homes some certainty in, in this overwhelming process that we are going through at this time, and just allow us to build back at the twenty eighteen level. I think it has been stated, and I, I am totally in this, in, in this camp that I want to do everything we can to make our house as green as possible, but I don't want to be forced in further extending uncertainty that just seems to be rife in this twenty twenty-one building code. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Elise Jones.
Good evening. My name is Elise Jones. I'm the Director of the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project and also a former county commissioner who served Lewisville and other Boulder County residents through a number of disasters. So I want to reiterate my heartfelt support for everyone affected by the fire. And as I mentioned two weeks ago, a number of us have been working hard to gather resources to help homeowners build back better so homes are more comfortable, safer, healthier, have lower utility bills, and also emit less climate pollution. And we've made lots of progress in the last two weeks. You heard from Lisa that Excel has finalized its rebates, seventy-five hundred dollars to rebuild to the twenty twenty-one I E C C, and up to thirty thousand dollars more for other high-performance features. You've also heard about SunShares, great offer to provide fifteen-year community solar garden subscriptions with no added cost. You might not have heard about Solar United Neighborhood's invitation to homeowners to participate in its solar co-op program where if you want panels on your house and the solar tax credits, you often get discounts of up to twenty to thirty percent. We've also just established the Marshall Fire Resilient Rebuild Assistance Fund at the Community Foundation to collect donations to further drive down costs for homeowners. We've already had pledges, pledges of up to two hundred thousand. Boulder County has agreed to create a web portal and staffing support to assist rebuilding homeowners in accessing these resources. We're still working and expect in the next week state legislation to provide a multimillion-dollar disaster appropriation, and that's going to allow the Colorado Clean Energy Fund to provide very low-cost financing for any additional costs that aren't covered by rebates for homeowners who want to build higher-performance houses. We're still working on equipment discounts from manufacturers of heat pumps and other equipment. We've been doing webinars, green building webinars with homeowners and builders, and we'll keep doing so. So wanted to share that good news and let you know that we're, we're all in this together. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Christine Brink, Brinker.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Christine Brinker. I work on energy code and green building analysis for the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project in Boulder County. Coincidentally, I'm going right after Elise. Many of the costs that have been thrown out are ridiculously high. As Fuentes Construction said a few comments ago, numerous builders in the area have shown they can build net-zero homes for the same cost as code minimum homes. Also, like Elise said, the broader community in the region has heard the extreme heartbreak and the extreme financial duress faced by homeowners, and they've amassed a huge package of financial resources that should more than cover any additional cost to rebuild homes that are healthier, safer, more resilient, and less damaging to the climate. In addition to Excel's incentives of thirty thousand, there's the Community Foundation, and there's imminent state legislation that'll have additional funding support. And even though the focus has been on first costs, it's worth noting that the energy code provisions save money on energy bills month after month after month for the entire lifetime of the house, which we hope this time is going to be in excess of a hundred years. Many of these costs are far cheaper to build upfront than to retrofit later. So in short, we encourage you to keep the energy code as it is. If you're looking for a compromise or a tweak in the future, you could consider removing the appendix requirement specifically for high-efficiency all-electric homes, which would accomplish similar climate goals. In the end, you could also move the EV requirements down to just one EV-ready spot for household to save a little bit. And both of those approaches would match the direction that a half dozen of your surrounding communities are heading. So again, we prefer you keep the code as is, and we know that climate change has a best, or exacerbated climate taint here, and we hope to prevent that for future homes in the area. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Katie Wilkerson.
Hi, at nine fifty-four St. Andrews Lane, we are a total loss. Just a couple of questions in terms of the research that everybody is doing on cost. Somebody else alluded to this, supply chain, builders that have the skill set, architects that have the skill set. There are so many pieces. I love the idea, but there are so many pieces to this policy that we don't have the ability to do. How long is it going to take to train the Remington team? Their architects, their builders, their people. We, listening to the green build thing forum the other night, if you don't do it right from the beginning, the costs go through the roof because you're not doing it right. How many people in this community can actually do it right? We have over, what, six hundred homes that need to be rebuilt now, not two years from now, not once we have this all figured out. We need it now. We can't do this. The gentleman who couldn't get the heat pump in his house and he's upset, doesn't sound like he's replaced it yet. Why not? Is it supply chain? Is it skill set? Why hasn't he gone out and, and retrofitted his home? There are reasons that people can't do these things. It has nothing to do with climate change denial or not wanting to. We just don't have the ability, the skill set, the, the supply chain to do it. We need the council to support us, not put us in a position where we can't rebuild. Thanks.
Thank you. And so I just want folks to know, we have a lot of comments left. We will be taking a brief ten-minute break at eight o'clock, and so we'll get one more comment in before our brief ten-minute break. And then when we come back, we'll continue to take public comment. Next, we have Paul and Kendra Stocker Brand.
Well, this is Paul Stocker Brand, eight two four Trail Ridge. We've lost our home. And the point I wanted to bring up, and you know, we're all listening and wanting to be responsible citizens in our community that we've grown up in and raised our family in. However, you know, when we start looking at energy usage and utilizing the bill that I received from Excel Energy for energy usage in December, our electricity emissions on one thousand one hundred and thirty-four kilowatt hours was one thousand five hundred and seventeen pounds, pounds of emissions, while natural gas was seventy-two thermes, which is only eight hundred and forty-two pounds of emissions while purchasing two hundred kilowatt hours from wind source. And so as we're all start taking a look at wanting to be green, look to the future, worry about climate change, I think those are all responsible things to do. But you need to take a look and understand emissions. And if you're going to worry about putting pounds of emissions outside of the city of Lewisville, you're accomplishing that with this net-zero green initiative. It puts the emissions in other communities, not in Lewisville's. And I don't think that's what you want to push in this, in this environment. Let's build responsible. Let's give each homeowner the chance to make a choice that's economically viable for them to build the home that they want to build, build quality, and be happy in the end of the day to be part of this community. Right now, city council, the stress and the pressure that's on all of us to try and maintain our full-time jobs and take care of these because you guys aren't making decisions is unreasonable amount of pressure and stress to succeed as a father and as a husband. Please address this.
Thank you for your comments. And so we will take a ten-minute break. It's eight o'clock now, and we'll be back in ten minutes, and we'll continue to take public comment when we get back. And we'll continue to take public comment when we get back. Next in the queue, we have Jenna Akita. Welcome back, everyone. We're waiting on a couple more council members. All right, well, we have a call on, so we'll go ahead and get started. Next in the queue, we have Jenna Akita.
Hi, my name is Jenna Akita, 979 St. Andrews Lane. I would like to just reiterate some of the points that were already stated earlier. The code is meant to go ahead and help with the net zero. Everyone is concerned about climate change. The problem with what's going on presently is most of the people who were victims of the Marshall Fire were not intending to build. Most people who are going to rebuild or remodel know that there is a code standard that needs to be met, and there is an additional expense to it. At this point in time, the big issue is under insurance. We know that so many people are underinsured. Adding an additional expense makes it that much more difficult to go ahead and build. It is not that we don't want to go ahead and meet the standards. It's just that, given the uncertainty of cost, the uncertainty of the building supply chain, the uncertainty of labor, and the timelines on all the insurance processes, we don't know if that's going to hinder our building. Everybody wants to go ahead and rebuild. We want to rebuild to the highest standard. Whether we can or not is going to be something else. I think that if there was some kind of assurance that it would only cost us $5,000 to $10,000, people would be accepting of the new standards. But there is no assurance of anything at this point in time. The estimates have been all over the place, as well as the uncertainty of all the things that I stated previously. Make it so we are very unsure, as well as concerned about what our eligibility for any kind of grants. Pending legislation doesn't go ahead and give us any assurance for any of that in the future. I would like to go ahead and say thank you to all our constituents who haven't had their homes destroyed in the fire and are compassionate. I think that the council needs to go ahead and look at their constituents, not just the ones whose homes broke burnt down, but the ones who are out there that support suspending the code. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tony Gonzalez. Tony, you might be muted on your end. Tony, we're still not hearing you. You might be muted on your end. Sorry, we're not able to hear you. If you are on a computer and you hold the space button, as long as you keep holding it, it should unmute you if you press it down and continue holding it. If you're on the phone, you could try dialing star six. All right, sorry about that, Tony. We're not able to connect with you. Next, we have Nancy Davos.
Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing me to take this time to talk to City Council yet again. I know everybody's been under a lot of pressure and we, I'm sorry, need to say, first of all, I owned a home at 1,003 Turnberry Circle and 919 St. Andrews Lane. Both of those burned in the fire completely, and we lost everything. I appreciate, you know, everyone wanting to come up to the green standards, especially the most aggressive ones. But I would like to reiterate the position I've already given council, which is to have compassion for the people who did not have this in their budget, people who have to choose between their kids going to college and spending that extra $100,000, which it will cost. These are the costs the builders are giving us. I am asking every person who is calling in and telling us the costs are lower to personally go talk to the builders. I am also asking every person who votes for the I C C 2021 codes where it's $35 extra a square foot to pull out their personal pay, their personal checkbook and adopt a family in need and pay for that. Right? There are so many families who love Louisville. We've been in Louisville for over 22 years. You know, my daughter went to Monarch. We love our neighborhood. We love our neighbors. We don't want to have to give up living in Louisville. And we know so many people like us are also underinsured. So it's not just the cost of the codes, it's the fact that we have to come up with a lot of money that our insurance does not cover to rebuild, period. So we're asking for compassion on that extra percentage and knowing that we're going to try our very best to build to the greenest we possibly can, which will at least be 51% more than where we were this time three months ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Kendra Stocker Brand.
Good evening. My name is Kendra Stocker Brand. Our home was at 824 Trail Ridge Drive. I want to say first that I am so excited to build back to the 2018 codes. I'll say it again, the 2018 codes are going to be so much better than my 1992 home was built to. It's going to be amazing. That 50-plus percent a better efficiency, I'm going to get like at least 40% better efficiency with the 2018 code. I'm just so excited about that. Let me tell you, the more challenging part about rebuilding is that I have three requirements. These are not optional for me. One is I must rebuild. I don't have any options. I must rebuild. Secondly, I have to manage the costs. That means I have to minimize the non-value-added spending. I'll come back to that. Thirdly, I have to be able to execute the build. When I say execute the build, I mean minimize risk. Make sure I have the supply chain and the skilled labor to do the work. So I am asking the council to roll back the, especially appendix R C, don't make me install an E V-ready space. I don't have an E V. I lost two E Vs. I'm going to be walking until after I build this house. Don't make me spend that non-value-added money. And secondly, I really support the idea of incentives. Let us make choices, reduce permits and fees, provide rebates. Let us be self-directed people and build our energy much, much better efficiency 2018 homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dawn. Dawn, we can't hear you. You might be muted on your end. We're still not able to hear you. The tricks I can offer you are to hold down the spacebar or to dial star six if you've dialed in from a phone. All right, sorry about that, Dawn. We cannot hear you. Next, we have Paul Prosky.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I have a question. And it's of, there's six of you there. I'm just curious, could you raise your hand? Which one, or the seven of you? Which of the seven of you have completed or are almost completed with your zero emission build on your own? What if we told you? We had a council and said, within the next year to save the earth and the climate, which is all very good. But we now expect you as telling us to do it, you must, within the next year, meet all of the codes and deal with all the construction issues that are coming up over this next year and building permits. I think the feeling you would have would be a lot like what we're feeling as the people being told, you need to think about the earth. You need to think about 100 years from now, how great it'll be. Well, we're, it's not going to be great for us 100 years from now because we're not going to have a home to build if you do what you're doing. We had homes just like you before this happened. To expect you to change and save the earth within the next year or two would be unreasonable. And that's what I think a lot of people feel in this case when they protested, when they're not, you know, didn't protest, when they're saying there's a problem. They're asking you, if you feel that strongly, you spend 100 to $150,000. Why aren't you already done? Why haven't you started? Why don't you have a construction crew working on it now? Because the costs, you have other things in your life. Well, just think about the fire victims. We have so much, and then think about the city unintended consequences. When all these buildings start happening, you've, I heard the city, and I've been to all the Zoom meetings and attended all of them. I heard that you're going to hire more architects, but can you handle all of the codes?
Thank you, Paul. So I need folks to stick to two minutes so we can get through everybody. And I am really sorry, I hate cutting people off. But we have been asked by the public to get to a decision tonight. So I am going to unfortunately have to hold people to the two minutes. Next, we have Shannon Mahaly.
Hi, thank you. This is Shannon Mahaly. I was at 1018 Arapaho Circle, Total Loss. Tonight, I want to address the people on this call who didn't lose their home and who aren't from Louisville and are trying to convince us to build energy efficiently. Thank you for sharing your thoughts and experience, experiences on energy-efficient homes. And of course, we're grateful to all the programs that are in work, but these are still in work. And this isn't an issue of building green versus not building green. You don't have to sell us on that. We're not anti-climate, and we would all love to build back as energy-efficiently as possible. This is an issue for those of us who are actually facing this rebuild of rebuilding versus not rebuilding at, not, not building at all. It's extremely frustrating to be, to be painted like we don't care about the environment and don't want to build back as energy-efficiently as possible. Of course we do. We just want to be able to rebuild, period. We have 30-plus years of codes to implement with our O N L bucket, as you've heard tonight. For some, 5K, 10K, whatever the cost may be, the difference between building and not building at all. We just want all of our neighbors to be able to return home, period. City Council, please help us rebuild and give us some relief on the new energy code. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tad Polinsky.
Thank you for taking my call. Can you hear me?
We can.
Super. I've been listening to the discussion, and of course, everything is very exciting. And don't take us wrong, I'm speaking for my wife also. We love green and we love the good environment. We are originally from Poland, and we know what the pollution is. However, we also would like to pay your attention that getting to the electric, all-electric excitement, also it gives a lot of uncertainties and the danger. Think about the grid in case of winter, and we have winters here. When we have a supply breakage of supply of energy, supply of current, shortage of electric power, we could hit up our houses, including that would include your children, grandchildren, and we could gas fireplace. We could gas water heater. When we do not have that, when we will have, and those disruptions will have for this or the other reason, we will be stuck with no option with the cold house, cold water, and we'll be waiting for miracle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Staff and Public. My name is John Wilson, Fire Chief, Louisville Fire Protection District, 895 Beatty Way. Thank you for your time tonight. The district knew back in 2014, it's ordinance sprinkler ordinance, that is, would affect people who want to rebuild on their own. But who knew that a wildfire would take out 552 homes 70 years later? Some of the reasons it passed back in 2014 and still important today is sprinklers save lives. Nationwide, more than 2,500 people die in the fire each year. Children, older adults, and people with disabilities are at the greatest risk. Fires are fast. They become deadly in less than two minutes. Home fire sprinklers can contain and may even extinguish a fire in less time than it would take for my department to get to your seat. New homes burn just as often as old homes and are more deadly because of modern building material. Installing both smoke alarms and fire sprinklers reduce the risk of deaths in homes by 82%. Fire sprinklers are green. They reduce the amount of pollution and toxins generated by the fires and, and reduce water usage. Safety of pets, who are unlikely able to escape a fire when homeowners are away. And lastly, firefighter safety. Let me be clear, residential fire sprinklers are for fires that start in the homes, not the wildfires that we saw on December 30th. The fire district understands the difficult situations our homeowners are in. We know that it was not their choice to have their homes burned down, and we did everything in our power to save them. We need to hold the insurance companies accountable to pay for the upgrades and codes. We need to make sure that the homeowners are not taken advantage of by contractors because of these codes. Whatever you guys decide tonight, if you do waivers or variants in the 2021 and sprinklers, the district probably would support that. We want to make sure that our homeowners can build sprinkler homes.
Thanks, Chief. I feel just wrapped. Thank you. Next, we have Mark Hughes. Mark, we can't hear you. You might be muted on your end, Mark.
Okay, I'm here. I'm here. Okay. I just, Mark Hughes, 953 Elder Addal Lane. And, you know, I think I'd echo a lot of what people say about, you know, we want to build green, we want to build back with as much energy efficiency upgrades, as much renewable energy as we can. I know that our house is going to be better, whether it's built to the 2018 code or the 2021 code. You know, we're really struggling to be able to pay for this. And I feel like people that aren't going through this don't understand what we're going through. And I appreciate that the council wants to do better and wants to give us incentives. But incentives, we have to put up money to get these rebates that costs us money that we don't have. And I feel like there's this feeling that we have an opportunity to do more for the environment by sticking to the 2021 code. But I'm not an opportunity, and I don't want to be treated like I'm an opportunity. I'm a Louisville resident, and I want my home back, and I'm stressed out. I don't sleep at night. It's hard. We want help. I want relief from the code. I want to be able to build to the code that existed eight weeks before my house burnt to a smoking pit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Goodron Emmerich.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to make a statement. We moved into Louisville in 1997. We had a long time home there. And over the years, we made every effort we could to be to be environmentally conscious. What I think is being lost in this whole process is the fact that we all are trying to be good neighbors. And we all are trying to be conscientious. We had solar panels, we had a full electric car and a solar system. But it took us a lifetime of savings and moving forward to get to that point. My husband and I are now in a place where recovering is not that easy. We have always wanted to be environmentally conscious, but I think, like most of our neighbors, we are in a place where fiscally, this is not so easy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Russ Moore.
Yep. Thank you, Council, for listening to me now. First of all, let me remind Council that your constituents are citizens of Lewisville. They don't live in Narvada. They don't live in Boulder. So what we're asking you to do, we're not your subjects. You work for us. We elected you. Secondly, I must say that I'm completely irritated by all the gaslighting that's going on around here. The notion that if we build to 2018, that the planet's going to burn up is BS. If we look at the context of this, we are 553 or 52 households and those who are displaced by smoke damage. That is 7 one billionths of the planet. The difference between 2018 and 2021 will get us to 7 one billionths, to 0.651 billionths of the carbon emissions on the planet if we just even it all out. And I know that's not the right math, but if you get my point, those of you who think that we're going to go to a climate disaster because Lewisville is not going to adopt the new code is complete gaslighting. Secondly, we have outsiders who are coming in here, making promises and trying to provide us with false hope, including Elise Jones, who has yet, I think she has good intentions, but she has delivered between jack and squat. So what I ask you to do is allow us to build from 2018 and try to achieve the best code that we can because we all will. Secondly, I see I have 30 seconds left. I am one of the principal architects of the Colorado Renewable Energy Collaboratory and I'm also one of the principal architects of University of Colorado's Renewable and Sustainable Energy Institute. And the whole premise of this is we all need to move forward incrementally to try to improve. And any suggestion that those of us who want to build to the 2018 code and move from there are being climate deniers, I find that offensive and I find it offensive. Anybody outside of our community is allowed to weigh in on this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brad Court.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. It keeps asking me to unmute and I had unmuted. Brad Court, 751 San Andrews Lane, total loss. I just want to echo the prior comments and I'm really disappointed with the politicalization of a very personal and traumatic event. I'm also disgusted by the outsiders that are joining this call and weighing in. This isn't about the town, the county, or the country. It's about the 600 families, our neighbors, that lost our home. I'd like to thank Councilman Lee and Councilman Dickinson that have weighed in and supported all of us that have lost our homes. Particularly like to thank Councilman Lee, who talked to my wife and I for over an hour a few weeks ago. Multiple builders have told us that the cost to rebuild under the net zero code will be an incremental $100,000 plus. That is just too much to bear for so many of us. The bulk of my time, any free time that my wife and I have, is spent trying to provide some normalcy to our children. My youngest was only six years old two years ago. She was just one and a half years into school. We all went remote during the COVID pandemic. We spent the last two years trying to provide normalcy for them then. Now our house is burned down. All I'm asking from the council is compassion. Think about those 600 families and what they're going through. Please suspend the 2021 codes for the victims of the fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Marcus.
Good evening. Thank you. Michael Marcus, 934 Luxver Lane. I'm hearing a lot of passion on both sides of the table. I suspect that my statement will come with some passion as well. I genuinely respect everyone's constitutional right to voice their opinion. I do not feel that the city council should consider the opinions of those who did not lose a home, much less individuals who do not live in Lewisville as equal to those who did lose their homes, like me and my family. If this council intends to continue enforcement of the net zero code, then I suggest an emergency referendum to enforce all citizens, every single household in Lewisville, to upgrade their homes within the next 12 months to the same codes that we are being forced to implement. We cannot afford uncertainty around timing and cost, and there is a lot of it. I urge you to rescind this code tonight. Those of you who, those of us, excuse me, who lost our homes have enough to deal with related to grief, malicious insurers, and a finite timeline to rebuild. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. And I see that there are a lot of people who have their hands up again for a second time and I just want to let you know, each person gets one chance to speak on a topic. So next is Dawn.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. First of all, I agree with everybody else that outsiders shouldn't be weighing in on this. The second thing is that as far as the costs go, you can probably justify almost anything and I see both sides doing that. What you need to do is to get, get to the facts. And the facts can only come up when people go to, to build their homes. I'd be for incentives to do it and I'm really for giving the people that lost their homes a break. The, the, the 9% is such a small number and they would be increased. They would, most of the homes would be improving if they went to the 2018 cost standard. And the guy that got on about the sprinkler system being equal cost, that, that's just garbage because you have to consider minimum the pipes to go into the sprinkler system. That's all I got.
Thank you. And next, we have Tony Gonzalez. We'll try again. I hope it works.
Hi, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. Thank you. I really appreciate you coming back with me. I'm in the process of kind of getting two little kids tucked in and I think we had some technical difficulties. My family's at 843 West Mulberry Street. If I was one house behind me or two houses north of me, I'd be like many of my friends and neighbors, dealing with the burden, anxiety of rebuilding their home without the certainty of what it will cost. As fate would have it, my home was on the safe side of the fire line and my family is dealing with restoring our home for the next several months. But we need to stop dividing each other based on which side of the fire line we were on. I frankly find it insulting that I have to sit here in temporary housing, trying to take care of my kids and balancing the daily demands of work and life in the midst of a global pandemic, after a severely traumatizing event that will affect everyone in this community's lives forever. All what you're doing right now is prolonging anxiety for many of my friends and neighbors. All my family wants and all most of the people in my neighborhood want is to resume life as we knew it before the fire, as quickly as possible. While I hope everyone who can afford it builds a home that is environmentally friendly, the reality is many people are underinsured and dealing with severe uncertainty with builders and their own financial situation. These people did not have a choice to rebuild. Holding people to the standard and creating this level of anxiety is not in the spirit of the 2021 code. And let's be real, a few hundred homes being required to build to these standards is not going to change the global climate crisis. There is still going to be built at a much higher standard than my home and many of the homes that are 30 years old and still standing. It is my hope that common sense will prevail and the compassion and empathy that was shown in neighboring Superior, and I know runs deep in Lewisville, will also shine through from our elected leaders during this very difficult time for many families. I urge you to make the 2021 codes optional. I appreciate your time and attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brandon Garcia.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your time and attention. And yes, I just wanted to kind of just reiterate two themes that I think you've all been hearing tonight. One is compassion, the other one is trust. I mean, we've heard a lot of, trust us that incentives are coming, trust us that help is on the way. And what we're really asking for, sorry, just to back up, 965 Eldorado Lane, complete loss. We're just asking for you to trust us, trust us that we know what is best for our family and our community. You've heard the passion in our voices, the desperation, the anxiety, the trauma. And we're just asking for you, the city council, to trust us that we are going to use our funds that are available in all the various ranges from underinsured to slightly underinsured to full guaranteed costs. And we're all going to do the right thing. We all are adults here. We're all on the same team. We all live in the same town. We all have kids or have people with grandkids and, you know, we look out for the future, just like good people do in this town and we don't want to leave. We don't want to have to think about moving to another town. But, you know, we're asking for compassion in the stressful environment of uncertainty, of supply chain, of how to get solar panels, of how to get heat pumps. You know, there is such a challenging time to put a house together, given the things that have happened over the last two years and beyond. So just trust us that we are going to do the right things. Give us a chance to choose what fits right for our family, for our situation, for our future. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nancy Newell.
I'm, I'm sorry, did you hear me?
We can now.
Okay, I'm Nancy Newell and I live on Mulberry Street. I've lived here for 25 plus years and I didn't lose my home, but I lost my neighborhood. I look up the street and three fourths of it is gone. It's not just the houses. It's Gudrun and Alok up the street. She just spoke to you. She saved my daughter's life when she was two years old from drowning in the Crystal River. It's Mary Ann's daughter, Kendall, who's my daughter's best friend. They went around in second grade, ran around the neighborhood looking for free Go-Go's, went from store to store. We have shared birthday parties, Christmas parties, engagement parties. We cried and held each other's hands when our parents died. It's not just houses that are gone, it's people. And these are people who care about the environment. I've known them for 25 plus years. And I do believe that we should, we should build back green, but not on the backs of the people who have lost everything. Please, City Council, listen to these people. Listen to them. Please give them a variance from these building codes. I want my neighbors back. I want my neighborhood back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Paul Prosky. Oh, I'm sorry, Paul, you've already spoken on this topic. Next, we have Ted Kowalski.
Good evening. My name is Ted Kowalski. I live at 945 McKinley Avenue. I did not lose a home, but I stand in solidarity with my friends and neighbors who did lose homes in Lewisville on December 30th, 2021. I ask the council to rescind the 2021 codes for those who lost a home due to the fire and revert to the 2018 codes. The intentions of the council for the adoption of the 2021 codes could not have anticipated disaster that occurred resulting in hundreds of families losing their homes. The divisive conversation that's occurring over the last several weeks and tonight is not my Lewisville. The Lewisville I live in, a Lewisville I know, is more compassionate and more caring. I'm sorry that the city council of Lewisville has not been able to show their residents that they care about them and care about those who lost everything as quickly and decisively as the town council of Superior has been able to do so. But you can do that tonight. You can rescind or revoke the codes with regard to the 2021 codes and revert to the 2018 codes tonight. Please show compassion. I appreciate, I appreciate your attention. Thanks.
Next, we have Mark A424.
There's that mute button. Hello, my name is Mark Appelfeller from 424 Owl Drive here in Lewisville. And I'm speaking for myself and I'm also speaking on behalf of 90 Lewisville community members, 90 Lewisville homeowners in the Wildflower Condominium Association at Owl Drive and Pine Street, where we lost 30 homes to the fire. We had another 60 homes impacted by the fire. We're a community that was built in the mid 80s. And we've maintained a nice Lewisville presence through all these years, through investments of ourselves and to our community. for us, the leap forward from our 80s construction to a 2018 building code is a huge leap forward in green and environmental consciousness. That's a huge improvement. The leap from 2018 to 21 is going to be a huge financial impact on 90 Lewisville families and homeowners. I'm not sure where I was going from there. I lost my notes. But here's something to think about. So that, how many of these homes that we're talking about rebuilding were pre-2000 construction? To bring those homes up to 2018 standards is a huge leap forward. For us to leap forward from our mid 1980s construction to the, to the 2018 is a huge leap forward. When you think about eight weeks from when that code was passed to the time our homes were lost to fire and so many other homes were lost to fire, eight weeks. I've been in Lewisville for 34 years. I've been here for 27 years. To think that eight weeks, if the fire had happened eight weeks earlier, we would not be in this situation. I ask councilors and mayor to please consider those things.
Thank you. Next, we have Frank and Debbie Price.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, again, and City Council. I was not planning to speak on this issue candidly. We've only been in Lewisville 18 months. We've been Boulder residents for 20 years, city of Boulder. And we have a house in the city of Boulder we can move to. We're very fortunate, but we lost our home on 837 Trail Ridge Drive. And we loved the 18 months we got spent in Lewisville, plan to rebuild and come back. Our house in Boulder is right on open space and it is the one that you would have thought would have been taken in a fire if this fire were to occur again. And I just wanted to voice the opinion that we have is that after listening to our neighbors, our newer neighbors, that I don't feel like it's our right or the city council's right, certainly not the right of outsiders outside of Lewisville, nor is it the right of those who still have their homes and don't fully comprehend this situation to ask for us to keep these codes in place. We have the means and can find the means to build to these codes and we will. We believe in building environmentally friendly house. We will build to net zero standards at 837 Trail Ridge. But I don't feel like these codes need to be in place. You need to trust people to do the right thing. You require them to have EV plugins. You do not require them to buy electric vehicles. It takes a leap of trust and I agree with some of the previous comments. As somebody who tends to build to these standards, I ask that you actually remove them and you put the, put the option back in the community's hands because nobody is choosing this. Thank you.
Next, we have Drew Siblick.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, my name's Drew Siblick. I'm at 107 Vista Lane. My home was a total loss. Probably won't need a full two minutes here, but I did want to talk about O N L real quick because I think a lot of people feel like that is a white knight. like that is a white knight that is going to solve the problem here, and that loads of folks will be able to unlock O N L coverage. For me personally, that's not true. So I've got forty three thousand dollars of O N L coverage. And with a couple of common sense tweaks to my insurance company's estimate, it'll cost fifty five thousand dollars to comply to the codes from nineteen ninety one to twenty twenty one. That's a five digit hole, even with the announced subsidies from Excel. So O N L will not be my white knight, and I don't think it will be for many of my neighbors. There are real people who are going to have to come out of pocket for this, and I think you should suspend the code or at least roll enough of it back that it'll be completely covered by the Excel subsidy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Allison.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Luke Johansson at six fifteen Jefferson Avenue, Lewisville. My wife and I did not lose our home. We implore you to rescind this code. We have a architect in California and the fires that ravaged California years ago in the Napa and Santa Rosa area. The difference between Santa Rosa and Napa and their build back was vast. Santa Rosa worked with their citizens, their constituents. They were lenient in their code and how they allowed their community members to build back expediently. Napa was not. If we want to build back strong, I suggest we look at that through the lens of building back as a strong community through relationships and neighbors. If we lose one neighbor that lost their home, that is unable to build back because of costs associated with any sort of these codes, that is a complete failure in leadership. The fact that it's taken more time since the fire to now than it was from when these codes were originally implemented in November to the fire is a failure in leadership. The fact that these people are continuing to stress about everything and this on top of it is a failure of leadership. This is in your sphere of control. I implore you to act tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Lori.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
We can.
My name is Lori Draper, and my husband is Doug Johnson. We lived, and I'm going to emphasize that, we lived on eight oh four Spyglass Circle, and our home was a total loss. We learned recently that our home on Spyglass Circle in Coal Creek Ranch North was sacrificed to save Old Town Lewisville. And as a result of that, Mayor Stoltzman, your home, firefighters made a stand on Pinehurst Court in Coal Creek Ranch North directly behind our home to prohibit the fire from spreading to the wooded Coal Creek Trail through Dutch Creek to Old Town. You may or may not know how close you came to losing your home, and I'm going to repeat myself on purpose here. Firefighters sacrificed our homes in Coal Creek Ranch North to save our town, and as a result, your home, Mayor Stoltzman. We implore you to lead, return the favor, and save our ability to rebuild our homes by rolling back to the two thousand eighteen codes. And lastly, like my fellow citizens who have spoken tonight, I am outraged that council has allowed anyone outside Lewisville to weigh in on our loss and those of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Carol Newsland.
Yes, this is actually Richard Neslin, and I want to thank some of you for being there. I personally think we're making the wrong argument. No matter how you vote tonight, somebody is going to lose. You were a leader when you proposed the zero, the net zero. Why not be a leader now? Why not figure out how people can rebuild their homes and how you can help them financially? That would be good for the environment. I've not heard anyone say that they don't want to rebuild, that they don't want to be energy conservation prudent. What I have heard is a philosophical argument, a philosophy, a philosophy of we're going to be green and a philosophy of we want to rebuild our homes. Both of them are very valid. How can we reconcile them? Fisher and Yuri did this back in the Harvard project, trying to find common ground. I'm not seeing an effort to find common ground. You guys work for us, and I appreciate, I really do appreciate it. Find a solution that helps people that can't afford to meet the rules that you've passed prudently that are good for the environment. Now, I'll just ask one question, and I don't expect really to answer. If you all are in favor of of energy conservation and in the environment, how many of you raise your hands? Drive all electric cars. Well, that says a lot. You want to protect the environment. You have a choice to buy a car, and you're not even buying electric cars. That's pretty shameful. The last thing is, I would like all of you to watch this video. Four of you and plus the mayor have been very attentive. Two of you have been totally disinvolved. That's shameful. You're not representing us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next we have Ryan Spalding.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Hi, this is Ryan Spalding. My family lost our home at nine eighteen Rappelhoe Circle, along with one hundred and nineteen of our fellow neighbors in the completely destroyed Centennial Eight subdivision. We have resided in this home since two thousand and ten, where we are currently raising our twelve year old daughter and eight year old son who attend Lewisville Middle and Coal Creek Elementary Schools. I would like to share the following comments and questions to you in support of providing a code variance to the twenty twenty one IECC and allowing all Marshall fire victims the option to reconstruct their homes under the requirements of the two thousand eighteen IECC. First, I wholeheartedly believe that the application and enforcement of the twenty twenty one IECC was never intended, nor should it be used for the reconstruction of existing property owners' primary residences who are involuntary forced to rebuild after this tragic catastrophic loss. I believe that all currently adopted codes should only be applicable to non-Marshall fire related new construction and development by owners voluntarily building new or upgrading existing structures. It is not unreasonable to see the difference here between further victimizing existing residents suffering a loss versus appropriately following currently adopted codes for non-fire related construction. I'd also, if furthermore, if those who lost their homes are required to rebuild under the twenty twenty one IECC, then I would also demand that all existing residential homes within the city of Lewisville also be required to be retrofitted to meet the twenty twenty one IECC. I want to make one more comment. During a previous council meeting, my children asked my wife and I what we were watching. I tried to explain to them in simple terms that we were listening to the community's comments and the city's response in developing the next steps in the support of the Marshall fire victims and rebuilding of destroyed homes like ours. I told them that I came away from that meeting feeling less hopeful that the right decisions were going to be made by a city city council. They're very simple.
Next we have Chris Fuller.
Hello.
Hi.
So I I am I am all in support of of energy conservation and sustainability personally. I'm also a person at nine two seven San Amos Lane who lost their home. And I think the only practical thing we can do at this point as a community is to suspend the twenty twenty one energy codes. I think had there been more time, if if we had the time, I should say, perhaps more incentives, more guaranteed assurances that subsidies and county, state, federal funding would come to our rescue to help offset whatever the cost may be. And obviously, they aren't known, but we're all living with a lot of unknowns right now. And I don't believe at this point it's practical to require us to live with that other unknown. And many of us will, if we can afford to, build our homes in in sustainable ways and to the twenty twenty one and net zero requirements if we can. But I don't believe it would be remotely fair or justified for the council to maintain those codes in light of the, you know, the tragedy, the tragedy that we all face and didn't expect to. So I my vote and my my request is that you you honor the 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 request to sustain, suspend these twenty twenty one codes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That takes us back over to the council discussion this evening on this topic. I just want to start out by thanking everyone really for their fantastic comments. I think people put a lot of thought into what they were going to say and were very considerate. You know, a lot of people have brought this up, but this is the time of coming together and caring for one another, and it was very clear in the comments that there's a lot of anger, and that's completely understandable in the grief process and in what people are going through. So just before we get into the conversation, I just want to recap a few things that have already been done by council and staff because we've gotten a tremendous amount of public feedback tonight, but also in emails and in previous comment at the previous meeting. And so there are questions and concerns and confusion. So I just want to recap a few items that we've already acted on or settled for families in the time since the fire. So the city council has worked with our partners to cover the cost of debris removal, including foundations for any portion of the debris removal that's not covered by a specific debris removal bucket from your insurance company. I understand to some homeowners, this is not much because they have a sufficient amount of insurance, but for homeowners who don't, this could be between a twenty thousand and fifty thousand dollar benefit to those folks. The demolition permit fees have been waived by the city council. We're not charging tap fees for rebuilds that are using the same size tap, so it's fifty three thousand and ninety five thousand dollar benefit. So our tap fees are not being charged for rebuilds. That's a five thousand dollar benefit. We're not charging impact fees for rebuilds, which is a ten thousand dollar benefit. We've addressed the underlying zoning issues to streamline the building process for folks so they don't have to come in for variances. Just tonight, House Bill twenty two eleven eighty one was signed into law to provide property tax relief for survivors, and that's around seven, three point seven million dollars in state help on that. I also want to thank our partners who have brought for a significant amount of funding. I know on social media, a number of outlets have posted that the funds aren't secured yet, but they are, and it really is because of our partners like Elise Jones and others who have spent countless hours to bring direct grants to our community. And so like seven thousand five hundred dollars per home, if we continue to enforce the twenty twenty one code, additional rebates on appliances that are substantial cost rebates have been secured already at this time. We have other rebates and incentives that the state has committed to that are being enacted and allows we speak. So I just really do want to thank our partners who have actually brought forward funding for community members and dispel any myths that those things are not forthcoming. Some of the details of how the payments will be made still are to be developed, but the funding is is in hand on any number of those things, and you can read about many of them in the packet, but not all of them. And there are a number of these that were worked in, but do have resolution working on them.
Mayor, you mayor, you broke up.
A number of the can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. I just I lost maybe the last twenty seconds. It'd be great if you could back up.
Okay, tell me where you lost me.
Who? Anyone else got the place marker on that? But it is but it was only about ten or fifteen seconds.
I was I did. Did you hear me? Thank our partners who have brought forward incentives?
Yes.
Great. So next I was going to talk about things that we're working on as a council that are not completed yet. And so I understand the frustration on this, but I just want folks to know the types of things that are being worked on. So we've created a legislative agenda that includes working on insurance reform. We've testified in favor of legislation and working on two more bills we hope to see this year. One is to address the insurance system deficiencies, and one is to get additional state money for families like yours that have been impacted. We're going to keep working on getting support for those measures and funds. Our staff have already started working and have found ways to streamline the permit process and are looking to ensure that permits just cover the cost of the work performed by staff. And if there are cost savings that we can pass on, we will. We're working on several different incentive funds, including the new fund for raising dollars for families on rebuild costs. And while there are the rebates that we've told you about, like on things like Mitsubishi, every day there are more manufacturers that are trying to work with the city to offer rebates like on things like panels, different types of pumps and furnaces and things like that. So we'll continue to try to secure as many of those as we can to pass them on to you. We have heard and are working on SBA loan calculation issues that people have brought to our attention. We understand that there are many different issues that people are facing with actually getting their SBA loan, so we're working with our federal delegates on that. There are other people who are not interested in SBA loan. That's fine, but for the families who are, we're trying to make sure that they can get a loan if they want one and that there's time for their application to be considered. So we'll keep working on that. So there are lots of items that are not ready to report on and that we'll continue to work on. We continue to advocate with the community foundation to provide direct assistance to families sooner. We have heard from many of you that you need this money now, and that people donated the money for fire victims, and they want it now. So our our council and staff have been advocating for the payments to be made sooner. Several notable members of our community are on the board that gets to determine how those funds are distributed, including our former mayor Chuck Sisk. I've heard many of you say that you would like more clarity and assurance around how you get those funds that were raised for your families, and I would encourage you to contact the board members and urge swift action to get the money to survivors, just like we're doing on your behalf. I understand from many people looking at their insurance that they're significant under insurance. We heard from many of you tonight in talking to the commissioner and and from reading your policies directly, the council has asked the insurance commissioner for additional information, as you heard tonight, and we're going to continue working with him. I understand you won't know for certain how much coverage you have until you agree on a settlement and have firm construction costs, and I understand that that makes tonight's conversation even more stressful and uncertain, and I thank you for telling me that so I could understand that. And I understand from you telling me the way that that's placing on many of your decisions that you're making right now. So just the last program, I wanted to let you know that we're still working on advocating for is community development block grant funding for disaster recovery and individual assistance. And we're working with our congressional delegation to try to get that funding for you. So while there are many things in the works, I understand that that does not create a sense of security for you, but I just wanted to tell you that those things are in the works, and we're going to continue working as hard as we can on those. So tonight, the conversation is about the building codes. And it's just really important to frame exactly what part of the complex issue we're working on. Just like we heard from people in the community, they were talking about lots of different building codes. We heard some members talking about the Wildland Urban Interface Code. We talked, some people talked about twenty eighteen codes, some people talked about twenty twenty one codes, some people talked about specific portions of the twenty twenty one codes. Other people talked about fire sprinkling. I thought Mark Wernowski brought it up really well in his comments. He he thought it would be really helpful if there was like a more comprehensive list of all the codes and all the costs associated with every different code. And I think if everybody could see all those different codes and ordinances over time, and we could talk about each one line by line, it would make for a really good conversation, just to make sure everybody is talking about the same thing. Because a lot of what we've been hearing too is different comments that just don't necessarily match up with the actual code that we have written. And so what I would suggest to council for this discussion is that we go through one specific code topic at a time, and we'll take straw polls on those different sections because we need to give staff direction tonight. And then at the end, once we have a comprehensive list of all the different sections, we can take a vote on staff direction on the collection of all the different direction. So Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks, Vera. Just before we get into the details, I think it's a a good strategy to kind of go through the different elements of our of our code and what choices might want to make. I just, you know, I I want everyone to know I did not lose my home. I'm on Grant Avenue here in downtown Louisville. However, my wife and I did lose a home to a fire many years ago, and we like to say burnt up, not burnt down. And so we lost everything, but our insurance did cover the rebuild because unlike all of you, we we there's a new definition for total loss now, right? This this idea of even losing your foundation and And what I've heard over the last couple of months, I have so many friends that lost their homes. And, and I was at the rally on Sunday and what I, what I've, what I've seen and heard is, is trauma. And, and a lot of the words that have come out tonight are, you know, um, uncertainty and, and I'm scared and. Um, I have no control and there's pressure and there's stress and I, I want compassion and I want people to trust me and, and there's so much sadness. And I think it's really difficult. I find it very difficult when I speak to individuals to have. Um, logical conversations about what's going on because it's very emotional and it's very scary. And I think it's really hard when we're not necessarily dealing with the same facts. And who, I know it's been like a national concept, but when, when council's looking at. A study that says it should be about twenty thousand for the, the difference between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty one. That's a fact, right? That's, that's something that's been given to us, numbers been analyzed. And when your builder says it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars, that's a fact for you. Um, and the experience you're having and they're both valid because, you know, they're, they're both happening in the world. And, and I think our, our battle here is a lot around perception. And this, this, this perception, of course, a big one that is that, is that council doesn't care. Um, and that is really hard as, as an individual council person to hear that. I know it's hard for my, for my colleagues. Cause I've been able to work with them all for a couple of years and, and I do know how deeply they, they care. So that does, that does hit home, um, as, as a, as a complaint. But I get it. I get that it doesn't feel like we are listening, um. To the cries and, and, and the needs and that we're not believing you and what you're hearing. And it, and I think at times it feels like you're not believing us and what we're saying. And that problem of not believing each other really creates a lot of tension and frustration to a group that's already traumatized and stressed. And so I think it's just been really, really difficult. Um, I've had hours and hours of conversations with the mayor and with other people and experts. And I can tell you, everyone's working really hard for all of the fire victims. Um, and it's, and it's been really taxing these last couple of months for everyone who cares. Um, you know, I, I really do support our current code as it was written as a thing that, that needs to stay in place for our community. Um, but I, but I do agree that it wasn't designed for this moment. It wasn't, um. You know, we certainly didn't expect five hundred and fifty four homes to burn down. Um, and I think that if we knew that in addition to our new code, we would get five hundred and fifty homes. Hopefully without a tragic incident, um. Rebuilt to twenty eighteen standards on top of anything new being twenty twenty one, that would be, that would be an incredible accomplishment. Um, but it's, it's odd now in this moment of, of, that we're facing. Um, and I do think that, that twenty eighteen code that I was not a part of putting in place was pretty fantastic. It had amendments as well, so it was a little bit more aggressive than the normal twenty eighteen code. And it's a really good code. Um, and I, you know, I, I, I am sensitive to the fact that Superior, I guess, last night just passed their twenty twenty one code. So they, they've had a twenty eighteen code. They always had a twenty, well, always, but they've had a twenty eighteen code. And last night they, they passed their twenty twenty one code, um, under the condition that, you know, it wouldn't apply to fire victims. And I think it's difficult for me to see, um, Superior residents or Boulder County residents potentially being able to build the twenty eighteen standard. But, um, Lucille residents in the same crisis, um, won't be able to, uh, currently. You know, I, I, I think I'll, I'll try to wrap it up soon because I know, I mean, we had two, three hours of comment. I know all council members wanna say stuff. But, um, you know, really, it really touched me, the, the idea of these compounding uncertainties. Um, that we have so many uncertainties as a community right now, whether it's supply chain or who's gonna be my builder or what can I afford? And so I think the additive nature of, of code confusion. Even if it's just that, even just confusion about what the code is, let alone what the actual code is and what it's gonna do and how, if you can do it. I think that compounding of, of uncertainties is particularly, um, painful in this, in this. Again, it's really a traumatic moment. Um, and I hear a lot of people asking for clarity and certainty, and certainly one clarity can be, we're sticking to the twenty twenty one code. And there you go. There's your clarity. And some people have even said, just tell me that's what you're doing, so I know what you're doing. Um, and other people obviously want the clarity to be much different, um, but clarity is part of moving forward. Um, so. You know, I, I, I think what I'm concerned about is a year from now, having, having rebuilt a home after a fire. Having recently remodeled my home to the twenty eighteen standards. I can tell you that you're gonna have cost overruns, you're gonna have delays, you're gonna have supply chain issues. And I'm really concerned that nine months from now, if it has anything to do with the code, then it, it becomes, I knew it. I knew the code was the problem, but it could be a delay about anything. But I think that's gonna be a reality for a lot of people is that we're gonna be really frustrated six months from now. If anything related to the new code is the reason for your delay. Um, and I'm sensitive to that as well, and that's, those are really unknowns. Um, so I guess I'm, I'm gonna end my first round of comments with this. I, I really appreciate, um, Brandon Garcia's comment. I, I, I wrote it down, typed it down. Um, we're all on the same team. And I, and I really, really want you all to know that. And I know that was a hope for him, um, that we would trust you guys and know that we're all on the same team, we're all pushing in the same direction. And that's what I'm, I'm really excited to get back to a place where it does feel like we are all, council staff, members of our community are all pushing in the same direction. Uh, for the most environmentally friendly rebuilds possible. Um, and that last word is doing a lot of heavy lifting. Um, but I'm, I know we're all listening and I know all the council members care and certainly care about all of you. And we wanna, we wanna figure out how to do this as a community and how to get the best possible result for as many people as possible. And I, I, I try really not to speak for my fellow council members, but I can tell you that at their core and at their heart, that's what they want to. Thanks.
Council member Faggy.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, and I will, uh, reiterate that last statement that we all do care. And we're all considering what's best for the community as a whole. Um, I will say that first. The amount of work that's been put in by council and by mayor in particular. To try and cover the costs of this code so that we can build back to the twenty twenty one code. Without it financially impacting and in fact, in some ways even benefiting the fire victims is, is just remarkable. I mean, the, the effort that's gone in, the contacts that have been contacted. Uh, and one thing that isn't mentioned is that. The, the people that build back to the code are also gonna have long-term cost savings. Living in a, a more, uh, and a, a greener home. One that uses less energy and uses electricity and getting it from a, a solar farm. And there are going to be a lot of long-term cost savings building to this code. Um, one of my, well, I have a couple of issues, I guess. Um, one, when people are saying, well, Superior is letting them build to the twenty eighteen code and isn't that kind of them? Okay, that's also an easy out. We are not letting them build to the twenty eighteen codes. But we're paying them to build to the twenty twenty one codes that in the long run will save them money. Um, I'm also a little concerned about the precedent that we're setting. I mean, I did lose my home. I'm with all of the fire victims. I know exactly what they're going through. I know the frustrations. I know the time commitments. I know the sadness, the frus- I, I know it all, all of the negative. But why, as a group, should we be getting preferential treatment essentially over someone who lost their home to a fire? And it was just their one home. How are we not gonna say, well, yeah, we gave those fire victims these, uh, concessions. But we're not gonna give those same concessions to you because you were just, you were just the only one. So I, I don't like that part either. Um, and I think just perpetuating the whole issue of when are we gonna have the next fire? What, what are we gonna do with the next fire or the next disaster of any kind that comes through? What are we gonna do? And I would like to just set a new standard for, we are going to face it. And we're gonna pay for it. We're gonna find ways to pay for it, make it better. We are going to build back better. And that's what I would like to do. So that's my spiel.
Thanks, council member Faggy. So let's go through specific codes, um, and like point by point. Because I think there are a lot of different comments and a lot of different codes to go through tonight. And, um, I wish it was as simple as talking about one or one line item, but it's not. So the first point, um, the first area staff was looking for some direction on is the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Um, the staff suggestion from the packet was, um, staff suggests a program that offers an incentive for homeowners who choose to rebuild to section five oh five of the wooey code rather than make it a requirement. The basis for this recommendation is that there's not a lot of academic evidence for wildfire of this magnitude adjacent to grassland in the code that's written. So they're recommending that we would adopt an incentive-based, um, basically optional wooey code. And so I have a few questions to go through with the council. First, we'll, on this particular code, and we can add other questions if folks.
Mayor, you're breaking up again.
You gotta start over again.
Tell the staff direction.
Mayor, you're breaking up again.
The wifi's terrible tonight. Uh, she gone? There she is. Mayor.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
We can. You gotta go start out, start back at the beginning about after what staff recommended.
So, did you all hear the staff recommendation?
That we do an incentive program for an optional, yeah, coded option.
Thank you. And so, um, the council, so there would be several straw polls on this one to give direction. The first straw poll, do council members agree that staff should bring back an incentive-based program for all Lewisville residents that offer incentives for homeowners to rebuild or renovate to the section five oh five of the wooey code? The second in this string would be around, do council members agree that staff should seek funding from the federal government through the infrastructure program that was passed for implementation of the resiliency measures? Um, which would include things like these wooey grants and micro grids for our critical systems like the water plant and other things. And then, um, if other folks have struggles or, or points they wanna make on the wooey code, we can add those in. So those are the two polls we're hoping to get to at the end of the discussion. Are there any discussion points on the wooey topic? Mayor Protim Maloney.
Thank you, mayor. Um, just to be clear, you, you mentioned the two things and the second really was the funding of the incentive piece. Um, to me, um, that probably needs to be the first thing. So applying for the funding, if we have that funding, then we can offer incentive-based program. So if we put it in that order, I could support it.
All right, other folks have comments on this one? All right, so the proposal, so we could tie that together as one straw poll. So, and, um, and so I'll just frame what the straw poll will be and then we can take additional comments. So reframe the way Mayor Protim Maloney put it would be, um, do council members wanna give staff direction to seek grant funding? Um, from the federal government through the infrastructure grant and other grants more generally. For measures like the wooey program to be implemented and micro grids for our water plant and other resiliency measures. And then if successful or when successful, because there really are a lot of grants for resiliency right now. Um, would council members want staff to work on a incentive-based program to bring back to council for, uh. A voluntary program with incentives to, to rebuild or renovate to the section five oh five of the wooey code. So that would be sort of reframed as Mayor Protim Maloney put it. Any discussion of this point? All right, seeing council member, uh, council member Brown.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I think this is a good idea. Uh, I, I think that, um, you know, I've heard from a number of residents that. You know, they're concerned about, uh, resiliency and rebuilding resilient. Um, I think that, um. Uh, the staff's recommendation is, is well, is well taken. Obviously, I don't think anybody thought that. A grassland fire could do this. And so I think at this point it probably makes sense to be an incentive program.
And then just to be clear to everybody, the way that I stated it, it was to apply to all Lewisville residents. Is everybody come, like everyone's clear on what that would mean? Okay, and so just for the straw poll, we can do with simple thumbs up. Are folks generally in favor with that first topic? Okay, great. The next, um, topic that I think we need to give direction on is to the twenty twenty one I E C C. Um, so there have been a lot of comments, um, around things that are not included in the I C C, I E C C that I think people perceive to be in the I E C C. So I think it would be helpful for this discussion, um, to pull up page a hundred and five of the packet. On the screen for us. One minute, mayor, while I scroll to that page. Give me one sec. Thanks. Um, so there were some comments tonight around, um, needing to ensure that there was alternative energy to electric. So I just wanna make it clear that the code that's been adopted does not ban gas. It does allow natural gas to homes. Um, there have been a number of comments around that the code requires solar panels on site. The code does not require solar panels on site. Um, and so just this page a hundred and five of the packet show, and could you zoom in, Lisa? It's pretty small. Um, it goes through and lists the differences between the Lewisville version of the twenty eighteen code and the Lewisville version of the twenty twenty one code with one way of accomplishing it. The nice thing about the code is there's a lot of ways of accomplishing it. So I heard some comments concerned about, well, what if we couldn't source a heat pump? Well, this shows a, a version of the code you could adopt that just uses the gas furnace. It doesn't use a heat pump. You, of course, can use a heat pump and I think it makes a tremendous amount of sense to use a heat pump, particularly given the discounts that have been offered on heat pumps. Uh, but given, I just wanna go through this, want to look at differences so we can all find out where we're, where we're aligned or different. Uh, on these different requirements, so, um. The requirement includes additional, a little bit of additional insulation in some areas listed at the top. Uh, it requires appliances to go from a ninety percent efficient appliances to a ninety-six percent efficient appliance. Um, the ventilation system, even in the twenty eighteen code, had to have mechanical ventilation in the home. But the new code adds ERV, so there's some preconditioning. Increased efficiency in the water heater, instead of having ninety percent high efficiency lamps, um, there are all high efficiency lamps. Uh, it requires Energy Star appliances, I am, and some EV spaces. And then the electric panel upgrades, so there's enough capacity for an electric panel. So, um, I just wanted to put this up here so folks could ask any questions about what is and isn't in the code. Because a lot of things that I have gotten emails about that people object to and a lot of comments that we've heard about things that are impossible. Um, I just think this helps frame the conversations. Is there any discussion or confusion about what the difference between the twenty eighteen code and our twenty twenty one code is? Mayor Protim Maloney.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think Lisa can help answer a question for me on the blower door test. You know, I see this as part of the, uh, I E C C code. Isn't that also part of the R C appendix?
I am gonna turn this question over to either Chad or Anna McCullough. I'm gonna start with Anna McCullough, who is the group fourteen. Um, consultant that we did. She's better on the details.
Okay.
Yeah. Hi, this is Anna McCullough. Um, blower door testing is required by the, um, base code for residential new construction. Uh, we have recommended, um, in this package to get to a, that higher level of efficiency that is required by the R C appendix to reduce the infiltration, um, to, to air changes per hour at point two inches water gauge, which requires a little bit of a, um, tighter build. Um, that would be proven by a blower door test.
Um, and, and I guess I don't see where this cost is actually articulated in the analysis and, and I probably missed it. So I just wonder if you could point me to that.
Sorry, and, and what cost are you talking about?
The blower door test.
Uh, if it was required in the original code, we did not add it as an additional cost for the twenty twenty one code.
Okay, so they, so, all right, so it's the same as eighteen. All right, thank you very much.
Yes.
Um, thanks. Thank you. Any other questions looking at this to understand the detail?
Sorry, just on.
Councilmember Dickinson, please.
Okay. So I just on that, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the page that says the blower door test is builder one estimates it to be $600 more than the 2018. And builder two estimates to be $3,500 more. So it's, it's, it's in, it's in, I see it in that chart there as an additional cost. Obviously, very, very different estimates there. But I'm seeing about halfway down the page.
Just to, sorry, this is Anna McCullough again, just to clarify that. That is the estimated cost to build to the lower amount of air infiltration. So three air changes versus two air changes of infiltration, not necessarily the cost of the blower door test itself.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. So yeah, just to be clear, these are cost differentials. And I, I, I know people are very frustrated with us looking at cost differentials because people have to pay the whole cost to build their house. But what people are asking us to look at is rolling back particular parts of the code. And so that's why I think that comment tonight from one resident around all these costs stack up was really, really good. But we're talking about this particular part right now. So we're just talking about differences. When we're talking about this part, we'll talk about another part of the code in just a minute. We'll talk about the differences in that part. Any other questions while we're looking at this one? If not, maybe we could take it off the screen so we can see each other's faces better. All right. So just on this section of the code, our partners have brought forward funds that are secured at this point. If we keep the code in place, we know that Excel will give residents 7,500 fire, fire survivors. No one else in town qualifies for the benefits that Excel has put forward. So they really are just for families of the rebuilt. And so 7,500 is only for people who have to adhere to the 2021 code. There are other benefits people can opt into so that, and those benefits require some extra work. But you can get benefits up to 30, over $30,000 from Excel. And then Mitsubishi has committed to 50% off the list price on their appliances for heat pumps. And the state has committed to providing some additional, additional help. And there is a fund that the foundation just for energy upgrades. So there are a number of things that aren't listed in the packet that are confirmed that help offset those costs that we were just looking at. Any comments or questions about where to go on this? Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah. So just a point of clarification and Mayor, I don't have to put you on the spot. I can ask Lisa, the, the Excel rebate of $7,500. Mayor, so that's, that's, is that if we keep, I'm just trying to understand how one gets that. Like my understanding is the residents in Superior would still get it. Or are they not like, I'm, I'm trying to say if the code exists, but the fire victims are, are exempted from that code. Are they not able to get the, do they only get if they build a 2021? There's our.
My understanding is. Yeah, that's a great question. My understanding, based on the most recent conversations with Excel, and granted, these are rapidly evolving, but they are eligible to receive the 7,500, given the way that Superior adopted their code last night. They kept the 2021 in place for their adopted code, but allow homeowners who are fire affected to opt out back to the 2018. So that was my understanding was their kind of workaround to keep the Excel incentive available for affected homeowners. Does that answer your question?
Just, I mean, that's not the way the incentive is written that's included in the packet. So that may be new information that developed since last night, but that's not the way the incentive is written. Councilmember Lee?
I looked. I looked at the, the ordinance that was passed last night by Superior. And Mayor, you probably have seen, maybe you've seen that too. But my understanding is that I, I think that the background of, of that is that the that Superior adopted the 21 code or 21 code generally in part because they got 400 non-fire related builds coming in. And they wanted to try to capture those in, in that group. And that they are, and, and that the fire affected homes are, you know, people who, who own those homes can take advantage of the incentive, but need not. And it doesn't prevent the city or the town from, from getting the program. It obviously, if somebody built to 2018 code, it, as they've adopted it previously, they're not going to get the incentive. But if, but they get that choice under the, the ordinance. It's very clear that they get that choice. And so there certainly the presumption that, that Superior was going off of was that the, the incentive program is going to be available to all of the residents. But not all of the residents, all the fire affected owners. If they chose to go that route, but there's, they weren't going to lose that incentive program just because some choose only to build to 2018. Is that not your understanding?
Maybe we have someone from Excel on that would be willing to answer the question or someone from one of the partner organizations who has actually brought the funding forward for our community.
I'd prefer.
That's not, well, I, I mean, I, I would, I would have no problem trusting the people that actually got the money to tell us about it. All right. Other councils discussion on this topic? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a very emotional day, night for everyone. I, I have to say that I'm, I'm just, I've been struggling with this whole conversation. Because I think, I think our, I can hear the anxiety and the fear in, in our, in, in members of our community. And you know, I think we all believe that no one should have to choose between an energy efficient home and an affordable one. And I voted for these codes and I still fully support them. I believe that, you know, we have estimates on both sides of the city estimate in terms of the costs of these codes. And that's a strange place to be because we've got national experts telling us that our, our estimate is over. And we've got local builders who are telling us that our estimate is way under. People in our community are listening to their builders and are concerned about what they're hearing. I believe that the package that we have put in place fully funds the cost of these codes based on the information that we have. And I want to thank the mayor in particular for her advocacy for our community to work hard to bring in incentives. No other council member has done that. I haven't done it and I know none of my colleagues have in the way that the mayor has. But we are all working hard and we all want everyone to rebuild. Over the last couple of days during this conversation, I have been called cruel. I have been called heartless. I have been called despicable human being. Having never taken a position on these codes. Distrust among my council members is at an extreme high, I would argue. From what I see and from where I sit. Based on a lot of stress on all of us. We all feel the palpable fear and anxiety in our residents. And it's almost as if the facts on paper here almost don't matter. Because despite the fact that we have put together what I believe is the best estimate and, and the mayor has gotten, and, and our partners have gotten the best amount of funding to cover. Folks are scared still and we still haven't, for, you know, we, it doesn't matter to folks. I, I don't, I don't know what else to say. Like my logical brain says that we've done everything that we can and that everything, and, and I fully support these codes. But the emotions are, are real and you can cut them with a knife. And so so you, so you're left with sort of a, a feeling that the emo, I, I also want to say that just as we are talking, I, I failed to mention that. I too feel caught in the middle of a larger discussion. I know there are national trade organizations and statewide trade organizations who are using our conversation here in Louisville for their own political purposes, right? I know there are enemies of people on this council throughout our community that are using this moment as a, as a way to galvanize us against one another. And that's disheartening for me. I don't want to be a political pawn. I want us to be able to use, to do what's right for our community. Make this decision on our own. I don't. I have tried. I have had conversations with all of my colleagues and I really appreciate them and all of their conversations to try to come up with a solution. And what I am frustrated by is that builders are balking. And that we are, that, that despite our best efforts and our ability to cover the costs, there are some builders that are just saying, seem, seem to be saying, at least to some of our residents, that they don't want to play. And that's frustrating to me. Because I'm concerned that we don't have the capacity, either the supply chain or through the, through the end of the builders to, to do what we can. And again, I feel like that is being influenced by a larger political conversation that quite frankly, I don't want Louisville to be a part of. We don't need to be political pawns in this. We need to do what's right for our residents. So despite all evidence, the emotions that I have are telling me that I would, I would, I would prefer to give people an opt out. I would prefer to adopt Superior's code or Superior's ordinance last night, something similar to that. Very narrowly tailored code. Recognizing that our residents have now asked us basically to forego incentives potentially and to forego potentially maximizing their own insurance coverage. I think the commissioner, if he were here, would tell you that by rolling back these codes, we are likely not maximizing, you know, the ability of people to, to utilize their own insurance policies. But the anxiety and the fear of the community is real. And so that's where I'm at and I will, that is, that is the, that is the position I will take this evening.
Councilmember Moss?
Yeah, um, I guess I want to say a few things. One, I'm really, I, I, I appreciate Councilmember Brown's comments on the palpable anxiety and fear among certain members of our community. Not all members of our community. I'm also extremely uncomfortable with the idea of setting municipal policy based on people's fear and anger and anxiety, which they are all completely entitled to have, right? People have been traumatized. I'm very uncomfortable, however, using that as a basis for making decisions about what's best for the entire community. I'm also very concerned about making a special case for fire victims. Marshall Fire Victims narrowly defining this because tomorrow, if my house burns down, I'm going to be required to build to those 2021 codes. If my neighbors, if a, if my tree falls on my neighbor's roof and destroys half their house, they're going to be required to build to those codes. Everybody who has to replace a furnace this year or a water heater this year is going to have to comply to the 2021 codes. And I'm just, I'm concerned about a precedent. As Councilmember Fahy mentioned, I'm concerned about having different classes of people in our community. And I'm concerned about the fact that somebody, that might happen and someone might get pissed off and decide they're going to sue the city because it's not fair. And I just think there's too many, we start talking about specialized cases and I just, I'm just not comfortable with that. I think that that makes me uncomfortable. I'm a little uncomfortable with people comparing Louisville to Superior on a regular basis. We're very different communities. And have made very different choices over many years. And that's reflected in the services that we offer and the, the communities that we are. Not necessarily, not saying one's better than the other. I'm just saying really, you know, really, really different. And I, I want to also echo just the, the amazing amount of work that our mayor has put in to addressing the issues of all the fire victims in this community. She's been working double overtime and has just been bringing a ton of resources to the table. And I just really appreciate all of that hard work. And I, I, I don't, I, I have to say, I don't appreciate people making accusations about myself, my fellow council members and the mayor in terms of our commitment to this community and to the work that's being done. And the last thing I want to say, something that really deeply concerns me. And I think it's coloring this discussion. It has been coloring the discussion across the community is that I, I know that I have received personally, you know, individually and as part of the council, numerous messages, emails, phone calls from both fire victims and from people who've not directly been impacted by the fire. Who are, who strongly support the codes and who oppose the codes. And some of the most eloquent advocacy for the codes is coming from fire victims who believe very strongly that this is the right thing to do moving forward. The thing that really concerns me is that there are quite a few people in our community who feel uncomfortable voicing their support of the codes, particularly fire victims, because they're afraid of the way the neighbor, their neighbors are going to respond to their comments. And this is incredibly disturbing to me. And I believe it comes from the fact that some of the people who, who are advocating for the revocation of these codes, some of the fire victims and, and. Other people in the community. Have basically taken this position that. If you don't agree with them, that you're against the fire victims, that the only way to support the fire victims is. To support what they believe. And I think that that's really, really disturbing to me. It's very divisive and. I think we need to stop trying to separate people in this community into people who support the fire victims and people who don't. And start drawing lines because I don't think there's anybody in the community, in the broader community. That doesn't support the fire victims. So I, I just really hope we can stop trying to. Kind of draw that line that if you don't agree with me, then you're against fire victims. Cause I just think that's, it's really not. It's not, it's not beneficial to the community. And, you know, if you don't, if someone doesn't agree with you, it doesn't make them cruel or heartless or, um. They don't care about the community or any other number of comments that have been, um, directed at the community. So. Those are my points. Again, main point being I'm very uncomfortable with the idea of trying to create classes of, of people in this community relative to the codes. And I just really wish that, um, that we can, we can agree that there's a lot of support in this community for the people who have. Suffered and that there isn't a test. For, uh, that qualifies you or doesn't qualify you for being in support.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
Well, I want to thank, uh, my fellow counselors who commented before me. I, I think that. Um, you know, we all acknowledge the devastation of the Marshall Fire and the impact to our community. And I believe this, this is time for compassion. Um, just a little background, in October, I voted against this code. Um, and I voted against it because I felt at the time, I didn't have the information that we were just talking about on page 105. Um, if I would have had that in October, I probably would have voted for it. Um, because I believe, you know, moving ahead with environmental sustainability is very important. And I believe it should be as a code today. Um, and I think that. We need to have compassion though, at the same time. We have people that didn't choose to build, they're being essentially forced to build because their home burned. And, you know, I agree with my fellow Ward three counselor Brown. Um, that we need to give people, um, really more of a choice here. And I do believe. Um, having an option to build to the 2018. Um, should be part of what we do. And I think counselor most, you, you mentioned if we do this, it should be narrowly focused. I think it should only be for those people, uh, whose homes burned. And it should be the original owner of the home. So if somebody sells a lot, it doesn't fall the lot, but it's, it's, we're taking care of the people who lost their homes. Um, you know, so, you know, to me that's important and we should allow them to do it for. You know, two to three years so that they can reasonably be able to build back. And I think that's important. And, you know, it's a. I, I believe in that direction out of compassion. I believe in that direction because what we've heard and I. You know, I believe the information is on page 105, but not everybody is there. A lot of people in our community aren't there. The other thing I think that is really important is that we give clear direction. It's something we need to do tonight. Our community is asking for certainty and that's the biggest concern for our community is all the uncertainties they're dealing with. But I believe, um. You know, Excel, how they define this and so forth. I, I think we can work with these. Um, these entities are doing rebates and incentives. Um, to give those to people who build to the 2021 standard is the current code. But people have the option of not doing that. And that's, that's a direction I would like to see us take this. Um, but I also believe trust is important here. And I, I asked a lot of people this question. If we did something like this, would you build to the 2021 code if it, if the financial aspect. You finally understood that and you agreed with the analysis that we're looking at tonight. And every one of them said yes, um, and I believe them. So I believe the incentive approach really is what I'm talking about. If there's enough incentive and our cost estimates are correct, I believe that people will take advantage of that. So I think we're really talking in my opinion about a marginal difference. Um, but it puts the homeowners in the driver's seat and making these decisions. Um, because what we're trying to do is build back. Now with regard to setting a precedence. Um, I, I stepped back with that one and then here's the reason why. We've already made a decision as a council. And as a city to do debris cleanup. Um, and as part of that, the city of Lewisville is. You know, committed to paying 12 and a half percent of that. So we're already saying, we're doing some, we're doing something for. The victims of the Marshall Fire for those homes in Lewisville that they choose to opt into debris cleanup, we're going to be paying a portion of that. So this is deference. Um, and we're doing it because it's the best thing for the community. Um, it's the best thing to build back. It's the best thing to get our neighborhoods back in place. Um, and it's, you know. E- economic sustainability is the driver as well. So I agree with counselor Brown and I hope that we can all agree to move in that kind of direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Lake. You're muted.
Some days that's the best way. Um, thanks for, uh, to all of my fellow counsel. Who've spoken so far. Uh, I, I appreciate all the comments and, uh. But even, even more so. Um, I appreciate the comments of the people in the community who've come out and talked, I think, very eloquently and. In, in many cases, very specifically about how these various. Items that we're talking about tonight affect them and. Um, that, that is, uh, this is hard to do and, and the, the delays that we've had. Have been for a whole variety of reasons, but you know, that's, it's hard for somebody who's in the position that I think. Folks are in when they've lost a home in this to, to be patient. They've been patient. They've been very gracious. And I, I, I think we, we owe all of them, um, appreciation for that. And we know that that has its limits, right? Uh, and the uncertainty, um, I, I spoke with somebody the other day and she said, I have a list. Of 62 things to do today. And, um, and she said, I, I can't. Wait, I had, I, I don't want to put another thing on my list that says, come back in a few weeks. And maybe there'll be something that'll answer that question. And I, I get what she was saying. I, I really appreciate that. It is. Very hard and I can't even imagine what it's like. My heart breaks and I know that everybody on this council. Their heart is broken because of what's happened. For Deb. Our heart is broken. For everyone who's lost a home, our heart is broken. And for this community, which has been broken in some respects. Uh, because we've all had friends and, uh, childhood, uh. Play, playmates and so forth who've been deeply affected by this. And it's, and we don't have a good playbook. We just don't. We're, we're making that playbook up, but. What I would say is that to the, to you all who are in that situation, we. We do want you back. If you and your family are able to do that and. Uh, it's the best thing for you. We, we want that to happen and we want to try. To give you as much of a fighting chance as we can to rebuild and return. And I know because I've heard people tonight and I've heard a lot of other people and many of us have heard the same thing. People care about sustainability very deeply. And want to build to the highest level that they can. And that they will see as I think the more pro temp just talked about this, we'll see the wisdom. It, it both. As good neighbors and as economic folks who understand that. They're going to, um, they're going to get a better resale value for the home if they build to that. Uh, high level. And they're going to be, get the incentives that we're talking about, which the mayor and others have worked so hard on. Um, and I, I was very struck by the comment about trust. About you need to trust us. Mr. Garcia said that. And I, I think that that's really important. And what it says to me is we've got to respect the agency. Of the people we're dealing with, the choice they have to do what they do. They don't have a lot of choices. There are so many things being dictated to them. There are so many things that we don't have any control of. We do have control over this. And I understand, and I think everybody in this council understands the seriousness of the decisions that we're going to make. And the importance to, to you as residents in the community who've lost your homes. Um, that we try to put as much. As much in your hands as we can, consistent with public safety and with the desire of all of us. To try to be as climate forward as we're going to be, as we can be. And I, we're going to be that even with the 2018 code, but. Um, I think those who are in the position that, that. You are in as a fire victim. Um, you're in a, in a different position. We can articulate that distinction. With clarity. And I have no doubt that, because I, I know. That when we do, if we do our findings, we can explain exactly who we're talking about. And this is. An absolutely. Unprecedented event. Could it happen again? Maybe. But this is the situation we're dealing with and we're dealing with a whole bunch of people who need to be. Um, dealt with and, and it is, we can't let the tail wag the dog here. What we need to do is to give people relief so that they can have the certainty. That in my view, the 2018 code gives them, we give them the incentive. To move up to a higher level. And I think we can do that. I think, uh, I. That's, that's my, um, my. Uh, impression is that we need to incentivize people not to hold them harmless, but force them. To take a path which has within it uncertainties that people have articulated tonight. We, you know, our staff is very careful in my view about qualifying. All of the statements, all of the numbers that we provided and the limitations on those. They didn't want to oversell it and they shouldn't. And I, I thought, uh, planner Richie did a wonderful job of explaining just that and I thank her for that. I know that there's uncertainties even with the commitments that have been given. And I would rather. Get people to. Uh, rebuild at. The 2018 level and incentivize them up, not force them to be at 2021. And maybe we get there with the, the gap filler. But I'm not absolutely confident of that. I don't think any of us can be absolutely confident of that right now, given the numbers and their flux. So I, I'm, uh, that's where I'm headed. And, and council member Brown, I, I think what you said was very brave. And I, I, you sounded, uh, very resigned to it. I don't think it's resigned. I think it's a recognition of what you have heard for so long. Among the people who have been hurting and calling you. Cause I know they've been calling you. And I think putting some of that choice, that agency in their hands. Is what we need to do tonight. And I don't think that means that for the rest of the city, there is something wrong with. Distinguishing between folks in the rest of the city who are under the 2021 code. And those who we give relief to build it 2018 and then encourage them with incentives to move up. Thanks.
Thank you. So, um. It looks like we may be split in how we feel about proceeding on this. I have, I listened very closely to what council member said and it seems like there's perhaps. An alternate compromise that could get everyone feeling on board. Um, I think a lot of the hesitation is around some of the additional measures that we've put in place. As the city of Louisville to try to go above and beyond. I know a lot of the information that's so confusing to people is because we have done other things. So I wonder how people would feel about entertaining just a straight 2021 IECC for the citywide adoption. I think that addresses. The concern about two classes of citizens. I think it addresses the concerns about the uncertainty in the elements of the code that people are unsure of. If we don't require insulation requirements, now it's almost impossible to retrofit these homes. And the cost is fairly easy to calculate with much less uncertainty. If we go to that page in the packet. And the incel, excel incentives easily cover the costs. Councilmember Dickinson.
Um, yeah, thanks, mayor. If, uh, Lisa, if you could bring up that page that shows just the 2018 to 2021. Without any of the amendments without the RC. I think this is one of those mayor. To, to, to your point and we'll want it to come up, but I think this is one of those like. People want us to repeal to 2018. Um, and I, I think, I think you make a good point that, um, we're not on the page yet. It's the 6,000 some odd first one. There we go. Um, that we're, we're just talking about some insulation and a slightly better furnace. It isn't this whole other thing. It isn't a HERS score of 47. It isn't all these other things. It's, it's quite simple. It's quite clear. It's very easy for builders to look at this and say, oh, okay, yeah, I can, I can do a continuous installation. Um, that doesn't change the whole project. Um, it's way more understood. I'm still like Kyle. This is logical to me, right? Like this is very logical. This is not very expensive. It's less than the rebate that you get by building the 2021. It would seem to me to be illogical not to build to this code when it's two things. And you get a rebate for doing it. Um, whereas the EV chargers and the electric ready and the net zero. Um, is, it becomes more complicated. And certainly when you get to the HERS score of 47. And not having quite a prescriptive way of getting there. It's more, let's see how we did. I think. I, I really support this mayor. My, my concern is that we have to do a really good job. Of, I mean, there are over 200 people on the call right now and I hope they're listening that this isn't about not caring. We're looking at, this is so little. Um, and it's right there, plain as day. This is not a complicated, uh, change here, um, and not a, not a costly one. And I'm just, I'm just concerned because it actually for me is like a lot of it. I mean, the net zero piece and, and mayor, I know you've taken a lot of flack. You've done so much work to make it potentially almost free. Um, and we're not being believed. And I'm concerned that again, if, if we, if we do this little tweak to say 2021. The news is, oh, we didn't repeal it to 2018 and we don't care. It's like, oh my God, no. Where is like, and so I'm concerned that. This is totally logical and we're still going to have the same, uh, sales job problem of people feeling like we don't care. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm still conflicted on it. I could probably go either way, honestly. Um. And I, I, I guess, you know, what's important to me, mayor, is that whatever we do. The next thing is that we're moving in the same direction to take all of the hard work you've done and make it a real, like a reality for the people who do want to build to. Um, the highest levels and that we don't lose that, that energy of so much that you brought to the table. I know, I know how hard it is for, for, for you right now. So much you brought to the table. I know I know how hard it is for 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 you right now because of all that work. Um. I'm I'd like to hear what my other council members say because I kind of feel like. This is so easy for people to accomplish, Mayor, with what you've brought them that they all will. Like I I want to look at all two hundred and forty four of you in face and be like. You're gonna do this, right? I mean, we don't have to make you do this. You're gonna do this. Why wouldn't you? But if I say you have to, suddenly you're upset with me. But my goodness, it's sixty four hundred bucks on very specific things. Why wouldn't you do it? So I I think there's still a part of me that wants to stick with twenty eighteen and then sort of that idea, Mayor, is like. Trust me, trust them, like they're gonna do it largely because of what you've done and what you've brought to the table. They are gonna do this. Because it would be illogical not to once once it's their choice. Um I like to go with the majority on this. I I don't feel very strongly between what you've just proposed and what was proposed before. So if. I would like, I would anyways, I'm 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 willing to go either direction. I probably. Fall on the twenty eighteen side a little more, but I don't want that to be what breaks our consensus if we have one.
That's my reply.
Thanks. Um I have kind of. Couple of comments. The fir- the first comment is the one thing that I am extraordinarily comfortable uncomfortable with in this in our. Our conversation is the degree in which we are talking about. Us as council members, me, I, this and that. It's not about our feelings. Um and it it is about making good policy choices, which Councilmember Most. Mentioned the other day or just a little bit ago and uh you know, we we need to focus. On that and I I appreciate the desire to. Uh to refer, we keep referring back to our own documents. I think what I think what's missing is. That there are a a lot of people of goodwill in our community who have lost homes, who do not believe the numbers. There now, um maybe that's rational, maybe that's not. I I happen to think probably the numbers are somewhere in the middle. There there's, if we're honest, we know that we can't put a hundred percent stock. In virtually anything right now. It's hard to do that. And that's one of the reasons in the face of that uncertainty. Why it is important to credit the experience of the people who are coming to us with some skepticism. Of that. And the the approach that I was suggesting is not, you know, it's not a matter of repealing. Two thousand twenty one. That's something we're talking about here. It's a matter of giving folks who have fire affected properties, the ones whose homes were destroyed, the ones. Homes were damaged by the fire, an ability to opt out and to be incentivized. The other approach, the other approach that I'm hearing is, no, we put everybody at two thousand twenty one. But we tell them because we think we're there that we can cover that, and here are our numbers, and we've been over those. And that's a hold harmless. It is not an incentive. It is you shall do this. It's not, we think, based on all the information we have, this is gonna be the best choice. This is the thing that makes sense as. As Councilmember Dickinson just said, there's no reason why you wouldn't do it. Well. Maybe that's true, but the people that we've all talked to are scraping together the dimes. And the dollars to get to the point where they can build back. We say, ah, six thousand bucks. You know, we think we can cover it and and I'm not making light at all, Mayor, of the work that you've done. I I want to keep those incentives there. So people can use them. But I also want to recognize the risks that our people in our community are facing. And believe they are facing because they have heard different information than we have, and they don't trust our numbers completely. We've got to have some trust. They're not making stuff up for the most part. There may be some folks. Who are pulling numbers out of the air, but most of these people have done their homework and they just, they're they're concerned that the numbers that. We've provided them with may not get them where we say they're gonna get them. If you put that in their hands. If all of what we say is true, they will make that decision. We don't have to shove it down their throats. And so I think we should stay, we keep the twenty one code. For everybody, we give an opt out to the people who are fire affected. That's what I think, and then we incentivize them using the 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 tools that have already been created and others that I have no doubt. Will materialize as we work through this together.
Just customer religious because I'm keeping track to try to get us to resolution tonight. Um you said fire affected. So are you proposing that damaged homes would also be exempted from the code? I'm just trying to understand what kind of a list you are proposing making.
Well, okay, there's one, the houses that have been destroyed by the and. All of it has to do with the fire of December thirtieth and thereabouts.
Sure, just 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 like there, every person in town has been affected. So if you could succinctly describe the group, I can list it for staff.
Bear bear with me for just a second. Um I think one would be the homes that had been destroyed. Um, one of them would be uh the homes that are. Uninhabitable, but ho- hold on for a second. I can probably what I'm, you know, here's where I think the um. The some of the definitions that we've had from. Uh from Superior could be actually very effective. Let me find. That if you want to go on.
I'll come back to you for the language, and so we'll go to Councilmember Most.
Okay, so um I can live with the compromise. That Mayor Stolman Stolman is suggesting, but I can't live with the fact that that we're asking everybody who's uh. Everybody else in town to go to a different standard. And they don't have any incentives. So I'm a low income person and my furnace and my water heater go. And I have to replace them, and now I have to spend thousands of more dollars. Then. People who were impacted by the fire and who and um who also are gonna get seventy five hundred back from Excel. There are a lot of people who have already replaced the insulation in their homes. Because of the fire to the new codes. Again, I I'm very, very uncomfortable with this idea of segmenting our community into groups of people. And giving different groups of people. Um providing different groups of people with different standards. The incentives. I can live with, although I think ultimately we should be offering incentives to everybody to upgrade, but um. People don't forcibly choose to replace their water heater and their furnace when they go, but they have to do it. People don't choose to remodel their house when they're when a tree falls on it or the roof blows off or the house burns down. And if somebody's house burns down next week. We're gonna say, well, you gotta build to the twenty twenty one codes, and we're not gonna give you any incentives. And I just, I'm very uncomfortable with that. So I actually, I'd like to keep. The uh codes where they are. But in the name of being fair to the entire community, to being equitable to everyone. In this community, I really think it's important to. Maintain standards because many people have to or have things happen. That are out of their control that force them. To have to make changes to their houses. And and I I I'm not trying to diminish the trauma that anybody is going through. But again, we ha- we have to make public policy that's based on equity and that is reasonable and. If we're gonna have to start now making lists of different groups of people and applying different standards to them, I just, I'm just very. Uncomfortable with that, and I don't think that's a, from my perspective, a fair and equitable way to um. Make policy.
Mayor Pratimani.
Thank you, Mayor. Um you know, I I'm comfortable with the twenty twenty one code we have in place now. Um and you know, I think there's a lot of really important aspects to it, so I really wouldn't want to change that. Um with at the same time, I believe the the opt out is something I think is important. For those people whose homes burned. Now, we've already done things um for that community and things I've already mentioned. So we've already treated that community differently. With our policy, we've already made public policy, we've already agreed upon over the last two months. So um this isn't. This this won't be a normal routine thing because we're dealing with, I believe, a a one off event. I hope it's a one off type of event. But um I think it's important that we we trust our neighbors, that they will be, you know. We will put them in the position of making these decisions, and many of them said that they would move ahead with taking advantage of the incentives. And if that's the case, we're gonna get to the same place, and we're gonna get to the same place by people making decisions. Um that are best for them and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Um Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks. Um Maxine, I appreciate your customer mostly. I appreciate your um comments on 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 equity and. Kind of having everyone treated equally. I think that we're not, I don't think council is separating, and I don't think residents are separating. People within our community. I think the fire did, right? I think I think it was a a natural disaster that is going to have. Certain people going through different experiences. So they're going through experiences, their entire house is gone, and also they can build a twenty eighteen code. And so, you know, if a tree falls through someone's roof tomorrow, um their insurance, the same insurance these people are using for an entire home rebuild. Is for the replacement of their roof, right? So it's pretty extraordinary to have to replace your foundation and even beyond that. And so, you know, if you have a fire in your home tomorrow. Um the firefighters who are amazing are gonna show up and and mostly save your home, I think. Um and so you're not gonna have to rebuild to the foundation again. And so your insurance coverage, the great insurance that all these people had. Will work for most instances. Um now, if we have another wildfire come through and take out two hundred homes or a thousand homes, then. Yeah, that's gonna be a problem. And again, we might want to do the same thing we're doing today for that group that is experiencing that. But I think I think the one offs. The individual people that might experience are gonna be an entirely different situation um with the severity of of the loss. I mean. Again, it is it is extraordinary to have a a home be a pile of ash with a foundation that is unusable. That's. Absolutely extraordinary, and so I don't think we're um gonna have to do that for an individual homeowner. So I I I appreciate what you're saying. But I think I think they're quite different moments, but um I I'll uh because I don't want to have to come back and talk too many times. I'll just say that. Um I am really, I really want us to keep our current code. I think it's a good code. And I think what we've done over the last two months, what staff has done um to understand it even better and to be able to articulate it better. Um I think our code is, I I think your code is really forward thinking and really important, so I want that code to stay in place. Um and I want what you've created, Mayor, to stay in place. Um I just want an opt out. For fire victims to build to the code that was in place in October.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Um uh would it be helpful to have a motion, a formal motion at this point?
Um I I think we're taking straw votes so that we can all collectively adopt everything at the end. So I think, you know, it seems like the consensus on this one or the majority. View on this one is to give staff direction to create an opt out for fire victims from the twenty twenty one code. Seems like that's what. Yeah, so.
That would that would have been, so my motion would.
Rather people not make motions on these because we're gonna collectively make a motion at the end so we can all act together on the collection of straw boats. So that we're not um going down this route of pitting each other against each other. But if I could just see, I mean, it sounded like.
I'll just try, I'll just chime in and say that I'm supportive of an ordinance. That mirrors what Superior has done, that would keep our current code in place. Uh but create an opt out for fire victims to the codes that were in place prior to. October of twenty twenty one.
All right. And so just a thumbs up from the folks that are looking to bring that back. I think it's pretty clear. Great. And so that solved that topic. So the next, let's move to the next conversation and we can come back and circle back. I see a couple of hands and I don't, I don't want to cut off debate, but we do have other ones on this one. So if we can make comments on this one, and then if we need to circle back and keep discussing it, and then we have some more code issues to continue to discuss, Councilway.
Yeah, I was just gonna. Circle back on the scope issue, but if we wait on that, we can.
Sure, if it's, yeah, if you could quickly list out the folks that it would exempt, that'd be great.
Well, and and I thought there was a little more certainty than there is. The Superior's structure has to do with. Kind of a impacted properties, which they define as this list that is kept by the uh. So they they have, there's presumably criteria that they have used, but I mean, um I know. Right? And we're gonna have to, by the way, I think in terms of the the code, the code. As adopted by Superior is different than what we've done. So we would probably want to do what we've done. With the opt out, but um uh and then eighteen.
Can I propose, can I propose something? Councilmember Light, maybe we just give direction to staff to come up with the language.
Yeah, I think that's fine. That's fine.
Great. Councilmember Most. Okay, so the next topic um of code that folks have asked us to talk about and focus on um is. Um people have asked us a lot of questions about single family residential fire sprinkling. Um so I was the only one on council when we had this discussion, so I asked staff to include the minutes in the record so folks could see. How the discussion went, and it was controversial at the time and has remained controversial ever since. Um any discussion on single family residential fire sprinkling? I guess, just given the hour and people's, um I I, you know, we're all working through all of these different issues. I guess I'll just put on the table. But I think that we should repeal single family residential fire sprinkling, give staff direction to bring back an ordinance amendment to repeal single family residential fire sprinkling. Councilmember Dickinson.
Um I I would agree with that. I don't have to add a ton more considering the time.
Mayor Proton Maloney. Okay, any other discussion from folks? Councilmember Lay.
This is one that I, you know, I I heard what uh my. Uh one of the folks that spoke earlier, Mark Cathcart, mentioned about, you know, the. The fact that uh a lot of people have had to build to that, and it has been expensive for them. I wonder. Um I mean, I would be equally supportive of, I mean, I'd probably be more supportive of um doing. Uh kind of a waiver of that requirement to the people who've lost their homes um as opposed to just repealing it. Um we're not repealing, you know, based on changed circumstances, we're not repealing. The, you know, the twenty one. Code, we're we're continuing through that. We're giving people a break on that, and I that's the only thing I would I would suggest. Um I don't know if there's any energy around that or not, but.
Thank you, Councilmember. Like, just to clarify, that's not at all my proposal. It's just to bring back a repeal. Um if it's if it doesn't make sense to have fire sprinkling, it doesn't make sense to have fire sprinkling. If it does, it does. I mean, this. I also felt the same way about the other code, but I'll leave it at that. Councilmember Faggy.
I was also going to make the same comment as Councilor Lay. I I was confused about, are we getting rid of that altogether or are we exempting the fire victims?
Yeah, the proposal I put on the table was just to bring back an ordinance to remove single family um residential fire sprinkling, and I. I, I actually, I, you know, just all these emails come in, we all read them all. We don't actually have time to respond to them all, unfortunately. And I apologize for that. I wish I could respond to every single email. But um, I think that there have been a lot of really good points made around single family fire sprinkling um, from firefighters, from non-firefighters, from builders, from architects. Um, and you know, I understand that some people in the community have had to build to that. And if they rebuild, um, they, if we repeal it, they wouldn't be held to the standard again. Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I just want to articulate that I, I do support um, removing it entirely. And it's for me, it's less, it is actually less about the fire victims um, than that I, I think it's not um, appropriate for single family uh, residential, it's not connected, you know, um, to other structures. Um, and it does obviously have a major effect on the current rebuild of, obviously that'll be thousands of dollars um, saved, but that is almost um, just a consequence of what I think would be a good, a good action.
Any other, this, um, so it seems like this general consensus straw poll on this one, our folks generally in agreement to have staff bring back an ordinance um, to repeal single family fire sprinkling. I may have frozen. Okay, didn't see your thumbs all there for a minute. It looks like there's um, it looks like there's support from the majority, but not all. Okay. And so um, that is the list of uh, ordinances and codes that I got specific um, questions about or saw comments on from community members in, in code questions. Did other folks have specific code related questions to other areas of the building code they wanted to discuss? All right. So um, what I would love, and I know, you know, this has been a really hard discussion and not everyone, actually, I think that is true. No one got everything they wanted. In fact, there were points when each one of us had differences of opinion on this. Uh, but I think we had a really good process of discussing the different areas of the code. I hope we can all support the outcome collectively um, of the combination of things that we worked on together. And so the direction we would be giving tonight is to give staff direction uh, to seek grants for the well-laid urban interface codes and um, for uh, resiliency like micro grids. And if successful, implement those programs, including an incentive program for the an interface code for the entire community. Um, give staff direction to create an opt-out program for the energy efficiency code for um, a grouping of homes that they would propose that they'll bring back at, at the later date. That would include destroyed homes and other homes that have been impacted by the Marshall Fire. And to bring back a uh, amendment for our building code to remove the requirement for single family residential fire sprinkling. Mayor Pretamani?
Um, I would like to add a little more direction to the opt-out, um, that it would be the homeowner as of December thirtieth. Um, and then we give some timeframe and I was proposing perhaps three years that they had a window of being able to opt out to build to the previous code.
Thank you. And so that's included in the direction that I was just giving. So that in motion form is the direction that we would give to staff. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries unanimously. Thanks for all your work. Oh, Councilmember, I'm sorry. Did you say no?
No, I said yes.
Oh, I apologize.
I, I, I didn't, I had my mute on and it didn't show it on my screen, but now I just wanted to vote. That's all. Thank you for letting me.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. Um, and so thank you, everyone.
Mayor, well, I just want to thank you for the process you laid out for us and the, I think that worked out really well. So thank you for that facilitation.
We're actually done with this agenda item. Once we vote, we're done. So I really don't like taking comments after the vote. Councilmember Lay?
Um, and I appreciate that. I just want to say one thing, which is um, for all those in the community whose properties weren't in the fire burn area, please talk to your insurance company about potential damage because I found out I have damage and didn't know that I did. And I hope people will do that even if they, if they didn't think that there was any damage. I'm just public service announcement based on personal experience.
Okay, thank you everyone very much. And that takes us to ordinance number eighteen twenty-two, series twenty twenty-one, and ordinance amending chapter three point two four, the Louisville Municipal Code of Urban Tax and Fee Business Assistance Program. This is our second reading and public hearing as advertised in the daylight camera on the sixth of February twenty twenty-two. Um, staff has suggested that we request a continuance. I guess I just want to poll the council. Um, I think this is a very non-controversial ordinance. And the more we kick the can down the road on things like this, um, it's hurting our ability to attract and retain businesses. We actually did this because of a business that was slated for the alfalfa's property. Um, and so I don't think it makes sense to continue it. I understand staff may not be here and I'm fine with giving a very abbreviated staff presentation. I'll even give it myself. If there's no one from staff that's willing to give it, but I just wonder if council would be willing to consider this this evening. Mayor Pretamani?
Um, well, I was on the uh, EVC when we created this, so I'm all on board moving ahead with this. I think it's um, an important economic program that we're expanding and tightening up in some areas. So I'm gonna be in favor of moving ahead with this.
Our folks, okay, I, I genuinely believe that this won't take us long and that having to repost it and re-hear it will take longer. All right. So um, if I, if there's a staff member that would like to give a very brief um, presentation, if not, I'm happy to give a quick overview. City Manager Durbin?
Yeah, Mayor, our Economic Vitality Director is not on the line tonight. So she would be the best ones. Um.
I'm happy to give a brief summary. So um, the, the city council has been working to update our program so that vacant space, vacant retail space that has sat um, without attraction could be more easily um, addressed in the community. So we have made some adjustments to our business assistance program. Are there any members of the public that would care to comment on this agenda item this evening? Stephanie Lyon? You might be muted on your end.
Um, we can't. And Mayor, her, her hands went up for a long time, so it may be.
I know, I know it was. I just didn't wanna, I didn't want to leave her out. Um, any other public comments on this agenda item this evening? All right, seeing that, I'll bring it back over to council. I would just like to speak in favor um, of this program amendment. I think it will give our staff the tools we need to try to address some of the large format vacancies that we have here in town. Any other council discussion on this one? All those, I guess we have to roll, it's an ordinance.
Yeah, Mayor, um, Mayor, you need to have two sets of public comments on ordinance.
Oh, thank you. Open it up one more time. That'd be great. Great. And so we will go back to the public if there's any other public comment on this agenda item. Seeing then, that brings us back over for council discussion. Any final discussion on this agenda item tonight? Mayor Pretamani?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number eighteen twenty-two, series twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion of the motion? Seeing then, I'll close the public hearing and I'll ask our city clerk for a roll call vote on the motion. Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Pretamani?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Faggy?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzman? Yes, thank you, everyone. That takes us to our city attorney's report.
I have no report this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly. That takes us to council comments, committee reports and identification of future agenda items. Um, this may be slightly out of order and I don't want to put anyone at odd odds, but I think we either need to add to a future agenda item to discuss in-person meetings or just go back to in-person meetings and not discuss it. And I would rather the latter to save time on discussion. Councilmember Lay?
I agree with you.
Mayor Pretamani?
I, I agree with you as well. Could we do that next month?
Um, so with a start time starting in April, you're saying?
Yes.
Is that okay with the group? So we don't need a future agenda item, but we'll start back on in-person meetings in April. Um, just so people can start planning ahead for that. And then um, City Manager Durbin, um, we have uh, COVID test kits um, that, that we got from uh, the State Health Department, thanks to Councilmember Brown. If you can make sure council members have access to those as well as staff so that people can test themselves for COVID ahead of the meetings and make sure that we create a safe and environment as possible. Thanks. Any other council comments, committee reports and identification of future agenda items? I have so many, but I'm gonna pull them back. Thank you, everyone, for hanging in there tonight. I stand forty and we're adjourned.